And to the Republic for which it stands, where nation and God invisible with their reason just as strong.
Has anybody heard from Mr. Cook? We can't pass any emergency without either one of them.
Well, that's pretty much the entire reason why we have a special reading.
Can I go?
I'm gonna listen.
Can I give him a call?
Please do that. Let him know if we...
Call call date.
Please.
Uh, she's not here anymore. He wanted to talk to me on the scene, a police officer.
Yep, so we've got, and I can, I can start that conversation, so I'm glad that you bring that up. So we've got, uh, so Mr. Miller, well, we're gonna hire Mr. Miller, um, as a full-timer, he is currently a part-timer. His, his mother needs twenty-four hour care. The person that takes care of her has just passed away, I was about to say. So she has nobody to care for her, so he had to remain up there at Wallbridge.
He didn't realize we had a meeting over here shortly.
Um, he, he, um, so he's gonna, we are not bringing him in on full-time. There is a part-timer that, that, oh, and maybe in the future once the situation with his mom is better, hopefully get that all worked out, but right now it's, there's no way he could come here and be that far away from her. She lives up in that area, so, and if he's there at work, he's dangerous.
Oh, he could be here in five minutes.
Okay, so if, anytime that she might need some assistance or whatever, he's right there at Wallbridge. So, so we will not bring, we're talking about the officers.
Okay.
Um, um, so, but there is an officer that, um, is from Wallbridge that would like to go on part-time. We can use all the part-timers that we, we, we can get, um. So we'll, I'll be, I'll be entertaining a motion here in a minute to, um, hire him. Dave, I believe, is going to be potentially, uh, interviewing a potential woman police officer from another department that, that he's hearing good things about that could be interested in coming here, a female officer. Do you want to share anything at this point, or is it a little early about that?
It's not that early yet.
A little early, so we'll be asking, now, I wanna talk to you guys about, we got another officer that I wanna bring on. Uh, Dave cannot speak on it because it, he, uh, it's his son. I wanna bring him on as a part-timer. His name is Devin Lappert, he's a great police officer. We reached out, it is not a violation of anything as long as, as long as, um, Dave has nothing to do with the bringing on of him. And, um, he's gonna have to pretty much, I don't wanna say answer to me, but, I mean, he's gotta follow all the rules and regulations, but, um, I would say, and we can talk to, Jeff Dennis gave us his opinion on it already, and it is not illegal for us to do so. We just need to tread with caution, which we will do. Dave is not allowed to give a, a recommendation to, and, and Dave had nothing to do with this. Um, his son actually came and talked to me a while ago, um, about his son wrestling, um, and then we got talked to, and he said that he would be interested in coming back on part-time in the village of North Baltimore if, if, if there was ever, if an opportunity ever arose. And I said, he's a good officer when you was here before, wonderful officer, and we need all the part-timers we can get. Um, he wants to come back on because it, it keeps his, um, certificates up to date, and we could, we could certainly use him. Um, we, I assure council, we would proceed with caution where we didn't violate anything. Um, as a matter of fact, I did talk to Dave about it a little bit, um, he can't share with me, he, um, the one thing that Dave said is he would probably be more, harder on him than he would anybody else. I said, you can't do that either, right? So we just have to be, he's a good officer, he's a wonderful officer, I don't know if any of you have met Devin, know Devin, he's a, he would be an asset to the village of North Baltimore. I'd also like to have him here just in case when Dave does leave, this gotta be a great candidate for our chief at some way. I don't know that that would ever happen, or how it would play out, but we want to make sure we've got Dave's replacement here, just like we try to do in every other department. And if we got a young, good candidate to fill that spot, let's get him in here. So, that's not a recommendation at this time, I just wanna let that, um, uh, to, to bring Devin on at this time. I still have to reach out and talk to Devin, but we would like, I would like to entertain a motion to, uh, is it before us, the part-timer?
Yeah, should.
Yes. Oh my gosh, what did I do? I am so sorry, I got so far ahead of myself.
I made it late to make you look better.
Well, you didn't help, I don't look good right now. I apologize. Thank you, Miss Walter. Uh, can, can we take roll call, please?
Mayor Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Richmond. Mr. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Engard.
Here.
Mr. Soltis.
Here.
Ms. Boe Frey.
Here.
Mr. Richmond, here.
Here.
Mr. Richmond, here. Here.
My apologies, I did not mean to waste your time.
You're all right. You did.
You're good.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're good.
Um, do, this, can we get him a packet? Um, we were just talking...
Or did I scoop up his?
Probably did. Um, we were just talking about some of the police officers, um, that's first, on the item where, um, I'll, I can fill you in a little bit later about the discussion on, Mr. Miller is not gonna be coming on, we talked about before, his mother, his mother's caregiver passed away unfortunately, I'm, I'm sorry to say, um, so he has to stay up there so he can continue to take care of her. He hopes to come on full-time later on. Dave, um, did you have something you wanted to share?
Yeah, that's pretty much what he's got going on, um, just some family stuff to home take care of. He's gonna be forced for a short time to take care of his mother, so the timing just all off.
So we will be, we are interviewing, uh, a, a potential candidate, if, if, if the interview goes well, and Dave, um, I'm gonna sit in on that interview, I believe, please remind me all of the calendar. Um, and then we'll bring a recommendation if, if, to the council if we wanna potentially hire that individual. There is, I, I will, um, I'm sorry, I will... Part-time officer. I got it at home.
I wouldn't see it.
Yeah, I got it at home. It came in a package.
Is it Robert Thomas?
Yeah.
Yes.
You want this one?
No, you can just make that recommend, you can make that motion if you want to draw on one of them.
On me?
Please.
Uh, there is a, uh, there's a section on it says provide justification for starting rate of building room and starting pay, do you want that in, in the recommendation?
Whatever the starting, it's twenty-four fifty.
Okay. And that would be as of what date?
Starting the ninth.
The ninth, it would be the ninth of February.
Okay, I make a motion that we hire Robert Thomas part-time officer at twenty-four fifty, starting February ninth.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this?
Where's it coming from?
Wallbridge. Yeah, so it's another Wallbridge officer that we could be getting.
Jeffrey Lee lives in Pennsylvania, but he works for Wallbridge.
Well, but it is just a part-timer, so, all the part-timers we can get, it, um, guys, it's all tremendous, especially keeping our overtime down. Any other discussion? Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Engard.
Yes.
Mr. Soltis.
Yes.
Ms. Boe Frey.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Did, did you have anything else, uh, just for Lappert?
No.
Okay. We will be moving on. Um, so we have a couple of ordinances before us, we'll be asking to pass as an emergency. I wanna just kinda spe, I, I just wanna explain the first two real quick, 'cause they're very, very similar if you read them. What it is, is we are, um, it's actually housekeeping, i- is that right? It, it gets them in, more in line with, with...
The second one, yes.
This, yeah. Twenty-five, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five oh two.
Yes, second one. The ordinance, uh, twenty-two, twenty-five oh two is section one, which we have in front of you, the red line, I'll send to you guys, we emailed the other day. Uh, basically, we are, ordinance changing the entire section, uh, the, we had our committee meetings, uh, internally reviewing that line by line over the last couple of weeks. Uh, the reason why we're doing this emergency and not a couple of readings is because we are changing it from, we have to do an ordinance to change it to do a resolution.
Right.
Um, to make it more, what, make it more, to be honest, it's, it's an internal administrative thing, what we do in our personal, personnel policy procedures manuals.
So, yeah, if I can interject, so in our, so we've been working on our policies, our manual, right, our policy manual, trying to get them worked out. Um, you guys have section one before you, and we had to, we worked, we worked to do this exercise where you guys have more than just one, um, one portion of the policy before you, but the reason why we had to do number one first is because in there it says anytime we make a change, we have to do it by ordinance, that's what our policy says, so that's why this one's by ordinance. This one says, our changes, actually we can do it by resolution, right, is what we're changing it to, so it's, and that's more in line, because we're not changing law, it's not law, it's not ordinance, it's, it's more of a resolution, so we're getting that, and then it's, it's, um, some housekeeping within there, um, of, of where it's gonna go in our ordinances, so it fits more within the scope of, um, sidewalks are being related to, being related to in the sidewalk section of our, of our codified ordinance book. Um, with that being said, that's why they're so close together that they are, well, I figured, I thought we made a mistake, and we didn't, once you read them, it's, it's self-explanatory, Josh did a great job on it. So, but I just wanna assure you guys, what this is about is, we are going through the, the personnel manual, trying to get into it, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a challenge, right, but we're working on it, and these guys are doing a great job, and we're trying to, trying to, trying to, trying to get that into compliance, so that's kinda what twenty-five, and that's why it's an emergency, so that we can continue with that, right, without, 'cause if it's not an emergency, we have to have three readings, or that thirty days is going to affect, right, so we're, we're never gonna get through the policy, so.
In twenty-two, five oh one, that was regarding sidewalks, uh, so regarding our East Broadway project, uh, Structure Point, who is our designer, that project came to us, and basically said, we need this pretty much passed as soon as possible to get, get some schedule. Uh, so I worked on, uh, the ordinance, uh, passed it to ODOT, passed it to our legal counsel, they reviewed it, they've made some changes, uh, and I decided to amend an existing ordinance, uh, nine zero one point one three, uh, so it has aspects of that, has aspects of what ODOT needs for the project to be forward, and it also has aspects of what the mayor was trying to do with his, um, with his sidewalk initiative, uh, basically, correct, wrong, uh, basically assessing homeowners for the repair, uh, maintaining of sidewalks on the property.
Pot, yeah, potentially, um, we, we're putting ten thousand dollars back for anything that might be done by anything we plan into the boulevard, and then, if, if, if the homeowner wants their sidewalk to continue, you know, if they want the rest of their sidewalk to be done, then we could assess their...
This would be laid out probably in a formal policy, maybe actually a additional ordinance, that's to be determined, I think, at this point. But basically, the reason why it's an emergency is because ODOT and our, and Structure Point need this passed as soon as possible to keep the project on task.
The four funding.
The funding.
Four funding.
Funding too, yes.
That's not just the schedule, but the, the funding that's, that might be available that they're working on, so. Is there any other, so it's, there's a lot that goes into these two ordinances, right, not only the housekeeping where it goes within our codified ordinance book, not only helping us with our, um, you know, with the manu and all that stuff, but, but, uh, there's a lot that goes into our things, there were five of them. So is there any other discussion on, on this that I'll make, that I'll entertain?
Let me ask a question.
Yes.
Um, this may not be that urgent for it, but before, when we were talking about the East Broadway project, and they wanted a five-foot wide sidewalk, am I remembering this right? So we decided that we would not include the sidewalks in that...
That's what this is taking place.
This is taking care of that.
Yeah, that's what we're going after, that's what we're trying to fund, sidewalks on both sides of the road, yeah, that's what we talked about at the last meeting.
We also have a special cap fund that we applied for on December thirtieth, uh, we applied for two point four million, and we're also going to be applying for another, I wanna say two million, February seventeenth. Uh, we've worked on both of these, uh, paid by the Structure Point, and, uh, it's additional costs, we're trying to expand our sidewalks from all the way to equal length.
But there's, but, but there's, there's a lot of things that can be challenged that we don't necessarily make that happen right now.
Yes, we're trying.
Well, we've been working on this for how many years?
Well, yeah, but there's, there's more coming at the committee, a whole lot we can share with you about.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. So I'll entertain a motion, um, uh, to read ordinance twenty-two, five dash one by number and title only, and suspend the second, third reading.
Motion.
I guess I just made the motion, I'm sorry. I entertain their motion, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Soltis did, I think.
It does matter, but we, we're in on it.
Mr. Cook, second, it, it does matter. Ordinance twenty-two, five dash oh one, an ordinance amending chapter nine oh one of the codified ordinances of the village of North Baltimore, would count granting the authority of the village to maintain, repair, replace, construct sidewalks located outside the public right of way and declare an emergency. Motion to adopt as an emergency?
I'm with you.
Second. There's a motion in a second, is there any other discussion? Vote when ready, please.
We didn't vote on the number and title.
Oh, we didn't?
No.
Oh my gosh, I need to pull it together.
Okay.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We're okay.
Go outside and come back in.
Okay. Okay, vote, vote when ready on the, on the reading of it, I'm sorry.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Engard.
Yes.
Mr. Soltis.
Yes.
Ms. Boe Frey.
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion to adopt as an emergency?
Got the first by Ms. Boe Frey, second by Mr. Engard. Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Engard.
Yes.
Mr. Soltis.
Yes.
Ms. Boe Frey.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
All right, I'll pull it together. I don't need a motion to read, I just need, we need a motion to suspend the, the second, third reading, then a motion to declare as an emergency, so I'm gonna move on to ordinance number twenty-two, five dash oh two, an ordinance amending section one of the personnel policy and procedure manual of the village of North Baltimore.
Motion.
Second. To suspend the second, third reading? Okay.
Need a vote?
There's a motion before the, suspend second, I'll, I'll pull it together. Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Engard.
Yeah.
Mr. Soltis.
Yes.
Ms. Boe Frey.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to declare an emergency on this ordinance.
Second.
Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Soltis.
Yes.
Ms. Boe Frey.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Engard.
Yes.
Let me go with twenty-two, five dash oh three, ordinance twenty-four, five dash oh three, an ordinance authorizing and directing the village administrator or his designee to advertise for bids for the construction of a replacement single span composite reprieve stress concrete box beam bridge over Rocket Ford Creek on East Water Street in the village of North Baltimore, with county. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the second, third reading on this ordinance.
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion, is anybody, is everybody aware of what's going on here? This is too, um, well, just real quick, that needs to be over and not out.
Yep.
If we can, please, after administrator?
I will do that.
Please?
Yes, of course.
Um, does anybody have any questions? Is this the, that we can bid for the, the bridge project on East Water Street? Dave, there's no other discussion? Vote when ready, please.
Ms. Boe Frey.
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Engard.
Yes.
Mr. Soltis.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to declare an emergency?
Motion ma, ma, or Ms. Boe Frey to pass as an emergency, second by Mr. Engard. Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Engard.
Yes.
Ms. Hefner.
This doesn't need to be, this is just a first reading, right? This doesn't need to be an emergency.
Yeah, no, no, actually, it is an emergency, um, it says it's an emergency on there, it probably should, but, uh, that was from, straight from, uh...
That was a statement, Mr. Dennis.
Yeah, let's, they can wait one more week, I think, can it? Yeah, I think it can wait one more week.
Okay.
Um, do you guys vote pass this as an emergency? It's for the, it's the, it's the Thayer, um...
Who's thinking?
Issues that we had.
The settlement.
The settlement for it.
For what?
For the settlement.
For this, for the truck, for the, for the truck, for the, the work that was claimed to be done on the truck that we disputed.
Did you put that on?
We can put it off till next Tuesday, and we'll pass it as an emergency if he thinks we need to next Tuesday. Did he say he wanted it passed as an emergency?
He put emergency in the resolution itself, uh, I noticed.
Oh, he did?
Here's the email.
I didn't see it as an emergency.
Not as there, see, from there.
Oh, he put it in there.
Put it down at the bottom.
Down there.
We'll see the same thing.
Yeah, he didn't put it in there.
Yeah, he's got it as emergency on the resolution itself, so...
We could get out.
That's all right, we can pass it as an emergency if he thinks that it's necessary to get this thing done, he's, he sees it as an emergency.
What kind of motion do you think?
Resolution oh one dash, resolution twenty-two, five dash, oh one dash twenty-two, five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the village of North Baltimore to enter into a settlement and release agreement with, with Thayer, Baltimore. Is there a...
I'm motion to wait the second, third reading.
Have a second, third reading?
Second.
Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Engard.
Yes.
Mr. Soltis.
Yes.
Ms. Boe Frey.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt this as an emergency?
I'm with you.
Second. Any other discussion? Vote when ready, please.
Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Engard.
Yes.
Mr. Soltis.
Yes.
Ms. Boe Frey.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you very much, make a motion to, or I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'm with you.
Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Engard.
Yes.
Mr. Soltis.
Yes.
Ms. Boe Frey.
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Did you guys have some questions on, now, just open discussion if you were in between me and her?
I don't, no.
Yes, did you guys have some questions about the sidewalks?
No, I'm, I'm, I, I think what I heard was that you're gonna do the sidewalks on Broadway.[1285.94]
Um. 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 Um.
Running like it was the year before.
Jerry.
On this meeting order, if we can all right?
Where to lead us to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we're gonna have to look through the future duties, senior tables. I wanna get a whole like thing of.
Nope.
Did you let Ms. Hepner know what how we wanted to move up?
Oh, we haven't.
No, she's chairing this meeting, so.
Are we moving? We are going to start with Lindsay with with County Health Departments, second will be, what are you trying to do, Synical?
Synical's next.
Well, the Synical family after that.
Are you guys in a hurry?
No.
Okay, so we'll 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 try to get the.
We're gonna help our, okay, well, there's a five, second, and then we're synical third.
So Lindsay first?
Lindsay first.
Or or here's Lindsay.
Great. Good evening. Thank you for having me here. My name is Lindsay Britt Edivar. I am the CEO of the Wood County Community Health Center. We are part of the Wood County Health Department. So our organization, we provide primary care services, medical, infant behavioral health, and pharmacy. We just have one location right now. It's in Bowling Green Health Department Building. Um, just last year, we served over twenty eight hundred patients in that one location. I just joined the organization in July of last year, and when I joined the health center, one of the first things I did is I looked at our data. Uh, and I was very surprised to see that we were serving over two hundred people who reside right here in the North Baltimore community. So there are two hundred people that are making their way up to Bowling Green to access primary care services. Um, the health department through our nutrition division, which Sophia is gonna speak in a few minutes here, um, the nutrition division actually did a transportation survey in North Baltimore last summer. And if you look at the responses from that survey, I think over two hundred people took the survey. Medical services was the top location or activity identified that people are having trouble accessing. So even though we are already serving people from this community, we know there are a lot of people who are potentially having trouble accessing healthcare services. Um, as a community health center, we accept all insurance types. So we do take private insurance, but we also take Medicaid, Medicare, veterans' insurance, um, and we also offer a sliding fee discount schedule, so, um, to help make sure anyone is able to get access to care. So we don't turn anyone away regardless of their insurance status or ability to pay. Um, so as I identified that there certainly seems to be a need, and we're already serving a number of patients down here, I started doing a needs assessment and just reaching out and meeting with different individuals in the community, got in touch with the Chamber of Commerce. You guys have a really great Chamber of Commerce here. They're small but mighty. Um, and so through some of those connections, I got, um, connected to the Area Office on Aging, who owns and manages the West Haven campus, which includes senior low-income housing. And so they do currently have vacant space on that campus where the former senior center was located. Um, it's about fourteen hundred square feet, and so we've been in active conversations with them, exploring could we, um, use that space for a health center. Um, we could use it for a small amount of medical and behavioral health services. It would not be large enough for dental. Dental is a huge need all across Wood County and beyond. We are the only Medicaid dental provider in this county. There is no dentist in Hancock County who can take Medicaid insurance. It's a huge need all across Northwest Ohio. So we are seeing a lot of people, even from outside Wood County, traveling to our site in Bowling Green just to access dental services. Um, so I really appreciate it. I recently got to meet with Mayor Patterson and with Josh, um, and shared with them my vision that we really want to explore how can we bring healthcare services here to North Baltimore. I think North Baltimore is very well positioned to serve as a regional hub for services, including dental. We also have over a hundred patients from Findlay who are coming to us right now in Bowling Green just for dental services. Um, so I'd love to figure out how can we bring those services here to North Baltimore, not just to serve your residents, but I think bringing in people from smaller communities around North Baltimore to come here is really for the economic development for the community.
It is.
So that's what I wanted to share with you today, just to let you know what I'm working on at Luctix. If there are any partnership opportunities with the village, um, as I mentioned, we are working with Area Office on Aging to explore for medical and behavioral health. Um, is there an opportunity maybe specifically about dental? How could we, um, find a space or potentially build a space for dental services? I did bring some flyers. I'm gonna pass them around. This is a fun event, just to show you guys an example of really who we are and what we do. We are very community oriented, um, so we do have a special appearance from the truth theory. Coming to our health center at the end of this month. If you didn't know, this is National Children's Dental Health Month. Um, and February twenty eighth is National Truth Theory Day. So we have a truth theory coming. It's a fun free event. But this is the kind of thing that I would like to also bring to the North Baltimore community as we look at exploring how can we bring, um, healthcare services here. So I'm happy to take any questions. I also have, um, business cards. Anyone is welcome to reach out to me directly, and I'm happy to have further conversations.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Um, I'm concerned about the abortion issue, uh, so I was curious. I wasn't sure exactly what the parent we were given, when it comes to that kind of counseling, what what you guys do.
So what you're referring to is through the Title Ten program, so.
What what is that, Lindsay? I'm sorry.
Title Ten.
Thank you.
Um, so as a community health center, that is not part of our program. So I'm the CEO of the Community Health Center. We do primary care services. You think of like your family doctor. Um, we certainly do not provide any abortion services. The health department has a grant, is managed under a different division, but it is part of the health department called Title Ten, um, which comes down through the Ohio Department of Health. And so through that grant, there is a component of it. It does a lot of different things, and, um, I'm speaking as best as I can here, so I don't manage that particular program. Um, it does everything from infertility counseling, um, helps individuals, it's services for sexually transmitted infections, things of that nature. If a patient asks for a referral for abortion, it may be provided as part of that program. Um, it's a referral. It's not anything beyond a referral, but the patient has to ask for it. At the same time, that program also requires if somebody's asking for, um, pregnancy counseling, if they're pregnant, they also are getting information about foster services, um, adoption, other things of that nature. And so it is required to be. It's called non-directed counseling. So the Title Ten program, it is a federal program. It's very specific that that program is not encouraging abortion. Um, it can't be persuasive, I guess, either way on that particular matter, but it's, um, patient driven.
Would would you be, uh, would your group also, just to put it in black and white, Planned Parenthood, Planned Parenthood's an abortion mill. That's what they do. Uh, stats are clear on that. Okay, so that's what they do. So that's where a lot of people go to those type of organizations. Would would you be open, if you were in town, to also referring to, say, the Crisis Pregnancies Center, BG?
Absolutely, and that is part of what's covered under that program. If if somebody asks for a referral, they would get a referral to that with, you know, other options.
Lindsay, just so I'm clear, that's not what you guys would be doing, correct? That's that's the services that are planned up more like big, right?
Yeah, she was saying, though, that if they're asked, though, then they would direct them to the Title Ten, and then then I was curious i- i- if if along with the abortion side, is there the alternative side?
Correct. Yes, that is required. It is required to give kind of that scope of these are all the different types of services, including pregnancy centers.
That's the only question I have. It, oh, I have one other question. You mentioned there's no space for dental, um, in that place, so does the dental, can the dental be at another location in town?
It can. I mean, our ideal model is we'd like to have all of our services under one roof. Um, for example, we do a little bit of blood pressure reading in dental, and if somebody has a high blood pressure, we wanna get them over for services. But we could operate in multiple locations. I think for a community like North Baltimore, I don't think it'd be a huge challenge for people if they needed to go to one building, you know, for medical and then a different space for dental. We do need, we dental is just different in the operations, and we just need more space, um, to to do those services.
So I got a couple of questions. So, um, do you guys have any place in mind at this point in North Baltimore, or are you just kind of looking to see if there's an interest? Have you guys looked at the buildings or any, is there anything that you guys have found in the village of North Baltimore that would accommodate what you believe you need? I and I'm talking about currently.
For like an existing space, I have not.
Currently in existence.
Yeah, I have not found an existing space that would work for dental or to like have all.
So do you guys have the financing to possibly build one if you found, if, you know, like if we said that, you know, we potentially have a site in mind that we own, right? I don't know what the legalities are that would be there, but maybe, you know, um, and I'm not offering nothing. I'm just saying, I mean, there's not even worth entertaining or talking about it if you guys don't, wouldn't even have the funding to build something of that.
So our board is very supportive of expanding the health center. We know that there's need, and we can see that in the data. Um, we know that there's need, and so our board is very supportive of doing that expansion, of opening up additional locations. And so I can't say we have all the funds in the.
Sure.
But we do have, they have been saving up for some time to have funds so that we can be doing additional sites. And so probably what we would do, depending on the project, right, if it's an existing space, we could do a lease. If we needed to build something, um, most likely we'd really wanna work with community partners and, you know, see if we can go for grant funds, um, potentially, you know, through the state legislature. Area Office on Aging, they've also identified dental as a need. They know their current space can't accommodate it, but they also would be willing to help us to go out and ask for funds.
So if you was to, it it, and I know it's real early to me to ask these questions, 'cause we're not quite sure, but it it, would would your vision, Lindsay, be that if you guys was actually gonna build a facility, not saying that you're going to, but if you guys, would that, would you try to encompass all those into one then?
That would be ideal.
I mean, right, that's.
Everything at one site.
You're gonna want, you're gonna want the child, the eight-year-old, the dental, the healthcare, everything kind of on one site, like you said, because if you find somebody with a problem, you don't wanna run across the town, especially in North Baltimore, 'cause you're gonna get stuck by a train. Eighty-five percent guaranteed, but, you know, um.
And we're, like, our focus is our patients, right?
Sure.
So we wanna make things convenient and easy for our patients, but also to be honest, as I'm going out and newly getting to know Wood County, so I'm gonna be resident here, um, as I've talked to other, I'll say, partner agencies such as a children's resource center. And I've told them that I'm coming down to North Baltimore and exploring these opportunities. They're all saying, take me with you. So I have other entities who are saying, if you can get a site opened in North Baltimore, we would like to be a part of it, because they see the need for bringing services down here as well. Um, we do have the nutrition division of the health department, so they operate, um, the WIC program. They used to have a presence here in North Baltimore. It'd be great if we could bring them back into nutrition service.
Sure. Thank you. Very good.
I also wanted that council be aware that it's not just for North Baltimore residents. This is all before.
That's right.
For those outside of the community, on the surrounding, even from Findlay, to bring additional, um, money into our, you know, into our village. I know it's not significant probably, but it is money.
It is.
Going in, exposure is a big exposure too, but overall, we're helping our common man, especially our residents.
When you mentioned the, uh, the senior citizen center, it's closed, so they serve the meals. Uh, is that, I I I don't even know if anybody's asked a question. Is that expandable? Because there's property on both sides of it.
So we, um, we would like to explore that. Interestingly, what I found working with Area Office of Aging, so that whole campus has HUD dollars in it, so the federal HUD, um, program. And it takes a long time to get approved by HUD, is what I'm wanting. And so because they have those dollars, even though Area Office on Aging, they they own it, they operate it, they do have to get permission from HUD for anything that they want to do on that campus. And so initially, we wanted to look at who we build on that space, um, because AOA is very supportive, but it's gonna take a long time to get that approval from HUD. So the easiest first step is just to get approval for that space, for the senior space to be turned into, um, an allowable use for healthcare services. Um, but we put in, I guess, the the request or started that process several months ago, and it's just taking a long time to work its way through the wall. So that is one potential option, but we would still have to do an assessment to see, you know, is it feasible to build a building on that campus.
So Lindsay, are you looking at for anything for us tonight, or are you just making yourself known? Just an introduction?
I think just making myself known.
What you're what you're hoping to.
Yeah, I would love to maybe kind of open up or continue the dialogue and kind of understand what are you guys instructed in. I do think if there's interest from the village, to me, maybe a good next step would be to have, um, I don't know if it would be a work group or just kind of a aside, um, group. We bring together some other community partners. I think there are a lot of other stakeholders in the community that also have needs, whether it's the school district, the library, um, other partners who we were looking at designing and building a space. Let's make sure that we're building something that could meet maybe a number of different needs for the village, not just for the health center.
What committee would this fall under?
Um, it would be economic development. It would be economic development.
That'd probably be the first place to serve.
Because, you know, everything. Yeah, economic development is where I would, and then it, yeah.
To me, the more, the more partners that, you know, say like, yes, this makes sense. I wanna be a part of this. If we kind of build that stakeholder group, working together, it could also help us as a group to leverage the funding that we would need to attract for the project.
So could you, so not saying that, I I don't know what the buy-in would be, right? I've not talked to many of the council members, if any of them about this, right, at this point, right, when you give me an opportunity, who's coming in. Um, so I I mean, I think that we're we're gonna have to have a committee meeting, right?
And we're gonna have to have one real quick anyway, right?
So.
Which we've already talked about.
So, I mean, there needs to be a committee meeting on this.
Economic.
That's our economic chair, economic community health chair, so, I mean, um, we could have that meeting and reach out to Lindsay and see if she's available that day, and she could come up with a partner, and then we could kind of coordinate with the smaller, like, go, like, 'cause you had a lot more details and you had more time when you got to sit down with her, which was was wonderful discussion. So, um, with that, we'll just, when they make that meeting, they'll just reach out to you if that's okay, and then maybe that gives you time to get more information or, you know, more plans of what direction you guys would like to go potentially in the village, possibly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Where are those cards left? Her cards?
Do you have, I have more.
I've got one. I've already got one here, Lindsay.
So somebody else sent some of everyone, too.
So. Yeah, and that's.
Oh, I'll take, I'll take this.
Uh, Sabah's with her, so we can.
We'd like to, um, here for you on the community of course.
Yes. Hello.
Hello, Sabah. Good to see you again.
Nice to see all of you. You can take one of the passenger seats. I'm Sophia Iverham. I am the new health educator under the Creating Healthy Communities grant, which falls under the WIC and Nutrition Director Katie Dennison. She can't be here today 'cause of personal reasons starting tomorrow. She's going on vacation. We're not. Well, we'll talk about that. So, um, basically, I wanna give you guys a little background about the Creating Healthy Communities. It's a grant through the Ohio Department of Health, and it works on improving health outcomes, physical and, um, physical activity and basically well-being and dietary guidelines, aligning with the Health, so Healthy People Twenty Thirty Initiative. I don't know if you guys are aware of what that is, but basically, it's a national, uh, driven data objectives for health outcomes overall, so we kind of aligned our local objectives with Healthy People Twenty Thirty. And, um, through this grant, we identified that North Baltimore is a priority community that faces those vulnerabilities that we're trying to address, physical activity and healthy eating, and trying to meet those, um, dietary guidelines. And SBI is basically the social vulnerability index of a community, and that's based off of sixteen different factors falling under four different themes, so socioeconomic status, housing, race and ethnicity, and also household and family. And, um, we are on the high side when I say we, I say North Baltimore, 'cause you guys probably end up like a family, that's to the T. So we are at the point seven four-ish, which is, uh, on the high end. It ranges from zero to one. Zero means the least vulnerability. Zero means the least vulnerable of having health disparities and vulnerabilities in the community, and one being the highest. So North Baltimore is at point seven, oh, point seven-five to seven. And, um, it is considered a Ohio health improvement zone. Um, so we really want to try to address those demographic factors and socioeconomic factors happening in North Baltimore. Um, so we built the North Baltimore Community Garden Project in collaboration with the North Baltimore Public Library, Briar Hill, um, OSU Extension, Wood County Zoo. And of course, the North Baltimore, um, Garden Club. They have been great at supporting us on this initiative and this project. And it's basically a three-step process. So we're gonna start first with a winter grow-to-grow program, which we just initiated and implemented. And can anybody guess how many community members we had participate in this wonderful event?
Seven.
Now what?
That was just a joke.
How did you know?
Safa knows, that was just.
It was, it was ninety-six, but then we ended up having a waitlist of about ten people that I had to call and be like, come back to the library, we have extra growing kits. And they actually came out in the ice and the snow and it was Saturday. It was really icy out, so I was really proud of that. So we have a lot of involvement from the community. And then the second, oh, go ahead.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, along those lines, pardon, should I open the question? So what age groups did you, what, what's, so, I mean, is it all over?
We saw a range from, um, parents bringing in their little kids to participate, the teenagers, to teenagers with their grandparents. So it was a lot of community involvement, all age ranges.
And that's right, so you already shared that number with me, that's why I threw out seven.
Yeah.
Just, uh, just to hopefully somebody knew. So, so, Paul, of course, Paul and you.
Yeah, so it was great. We had, um, so ninety-six participants. What that included was, you know, just getting them kind of familiar with how to grow plants and start it off with just herbs. So that's going to be our first step. And our first kits that went out were the herb growing kits. Our next step will be the tomatoes. So they'll be provided with, um, a big bucket, the, what are those tomato steaks? Is that what they're called? Tomato cages? And soil and the tomato plant and instructions for that. That's going to be kicked off in May, which is great because then, we already have people that signed up for it that were on the waitlist. So we're already about, the same people that were involved in the first round, signed up for the second round, plus like twenty-five. So it's great. So what the second step is leading to is the third step, which is why we're here, the community garden. And we've had great conversations with the mayor and Josh, and also there was somebody else on.
Uh, he's right over there, he just couldn't make it, that's, that's, that's.
Josh number two, right?
That's our, that's our superintendent of our public works.
Yeah, so if, um, you look at the outcomes of what this project is entailing, it's promoting healthy eating in the community, encouraging physical activity, community engagement education. And what I really noticed, like, on the get-go was the relationships created between the community members. And it was kind of like, they were committed to see each other succeed. So each person was driving the other to like, you know, get involved and attending. We were, we had meetings, look, I think this was like our sixth or seventh meeting altogether. So it's been, it's been like community-driven. And I really, really like to see that, especially with the Creating Healthy Communities grant. That's what you want to see. So we're hoping that all of this can lead to the bigger picture of the community garden. So we actually went out to the park to look for potential places to place a community garden. We looked at where is their water availability, where is their community cap accessibility, um, where is there a location in North Baltimore where all residents, like a central location for North Baltimore residents, that'll reduce that barrier of transportation and actually have the community involved in basically committing to this community garden. And we found that the best place was between the bathrooms and the seats that at the village park.
So that would be the, the, the northwest end.
I have, I have a map.
Put your, I'm sorry.
And it's labeled with a picture, a flower, on where we would like the community garden. And it'll be about thirty-five by thirty-five feet. And of course, the Creating Healthy Communities grant will pay for everything. We have a tool shed, um, little tool shed, um, budgeted for it. The raised garden beds, the tools, the plants. And we're hoping that the city or the village of North Baltimore can just provide labor, which.
To help build, correct?
Just to help build. And the mayor has, agrees to give his own time for that labor.
Yes, I will, I will certainly.
Basically, the ask is, are you guys okay with this plan?
I support it a hundred percent, sir.
I agree.
Oh, thank you, Paul.
Yeah, one, one thing that we would have to do though, just so everybody knows, and I've talked to, um, uh, Mr. Roberts and, and Mr. Long Friday about this a little bit. We, we do have, there's water available, I have that restroom, but we have to tie it onto it and get it out there so that we can use it. Whether we, so we talked about, Safa was, kept it pretty simple and said, you know, we just stub something out where we can put a hose, you know, put a hose on it. Because we have to have water for the plants, obviously, I'm not a farmer, so I don't know, gardener, I have nothing to do with any of that stuff, but I'll help in this matter. But I would like to maybe have thought about maybe, um, put a little bit, something in between these raised beds. Because how many raised beds did we think we were gonna have? Just one big one, or was it gonna be a number up there?
No, it's gonna be multiple.
Okay, so.
We haven't exactly specified yet.
So what, what I was thinking is maybe have a water source more, well, more, um, central, where it'll reach all the beds, right? So we might have to run a water line out and then stub it up and then have something nice there that it would, you know, I was thinking of maybe like an old water pump, right? Like an old pump that you see, like we have a, but then, you don't pump it, we just have a valve that you might turn. You know, we don't want elderly people out there trying to pump this thing. But, you know, you just turn a valve to, to, to turn the hose on or whatever we come up with. So we would need that support for, we would have to take care of that.
So what are the logistics for the select to do? Does a resident get an area or do you share the whole area? And then who maintains it? If, you know, if somebody doesn't want to take care of the area, how does that all work?
Perfect question. So we actually haven't decided yet how we're gonna designate, designate those plots of, um, the community garden, because we wanted to receive okay first before we presented potential plans of it. Um, other community gardens that were successful, usually they have a group that is committed to it one hundred percent. So in this case, the North Baltimore Garden Club has agreed to like, take this on as their main priority. But other community gardens have designated each plot to a certain family or to a certain person, where those people are held accountable. But since we have the North Baltimore, um, Garden Club like one hundred percent dedicated to this, I'm not worried about the outcomes. It's more of, if we're gonna designate each area for a resident, are they gonna be held accountable?
Right.
And if so, like, the way I see it is if that resident takes over that plot, it's okay if the North Baltimore Community Garden Club comes in and helps that person out when they are lacking. Does that make sense? So it could be either way. It could be just resident-led, or it can be like, well, the North Baltimore Community Garden Club is the main people for it, or they can be just the support for it. So there's different ways that could be.
Yeah, because we don't want this to turn over to our public works department that they have to take over.
Yeah, yeah. We will never let that happen. This is a five-year.
And I know you were, we've already talked about.
I, I come down here all the time, I will never let that happen. And, um, the Community Garden Club and Stephanie at Briar Hill, I don't know if you guys know her, she's also, she's been leading all of these community project meetings. So we're very involved and dedicated in seeing this become a business.
And I think just open communication with everybody, I don't think it will become that also. I think our opening would be a success.
Yeah, that would be my, I think it's a wonderful idea. My only concern would be is that it would become a eyesore in our parks, so.
Well, then we'd be jumped at you guys and we would have to make a decision on what we're doing.
Right, so many of the, the community members and the garden club have already decided that like this is the best option for them because, A, they don't have room to grow on a larger scale at their own place of living, their residence. B, they have to drive so far to get the stuff that they're gonna grow, so that's why they would be so invested in it. And also, I think because they've developed such great relationships with each other and this has become like how they maintain friendships, I don't think they're gonna be like, um, back off. Harry, did you have something to say? Oh.
Yep, any other questions?
None? I think we're talking, we'll have to.
I really like the idea.
Okay.
And, uh, the only thing was kind of being that close to the park and kids maybe vandalizing the, the garden, I mean, unsupervised kids, maybe just.
So another question that we kind of thought of, uh, Stephanie actually brought it up, was we did see that you guys have cameras on buildings leading up to that area. Is there Wi-Fi access in the area where we can potentially provide like a ring camera or something? And we will be having like a net around it to kind of close it off?
Or some sort of a, you gotta keep the angle down.
You would think maybe a fence with a gate even.
Something, we don't, we'll have to figure it out.
Haven't figured out logistics, but there will definitely be a barrier from those years.
The bees will love it.
The bees? Oh, God.
We gotta, we have to have more, uh.
How high?
So there's more discussions and to cover, we don't have to work out all the details here tonight, but there's, there's, um, there, yeah, there's.
Just stuff to think about, you know, security cameras, you know, do we put a fake camera there that says, smile around camera? Like this.
So, so you have some concerns about some vandalism, Mr. and Darren, like is that?
That's just, we're supposed to bring it up.
Okay, no, that's for personal.
Maybe somebody going down there and taking some tomatoes out of.
Well, we are gonna have a stand that is for the community. They can go in there if all the extra fruits and vegetables are gonna be laid out there. So it's gonna be like a, a.
You're gonna eat tomatoes?
I'm gonna assault you. I won't control it.
So we, we did decide on having that. And then also, we were gonna tie in like, um, I think Candy mentioned it was called a blessed box, where people bring something and they take something. So at her community garden, they have it where they bring in canned goods and whoever needs it, anything will just take. Or it's just there to offer just for the community.
True, that's all about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your guidance.
I mean, a concern of what he's mentioned, it's too close to the playground. We've been given land a little bit.
Yeah, it's just up north, but that's not ready, so I don't want to speak for that. Yes, sir, that's just a little bit to the west. It's, it's, yeah, it's not finalized yet, but I didn't get the confirmation.
And then, like, up here, it's not so bad.
Guys, there's, yeah, there's, 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 yeah, there's, yeah, there's. We're, guys, we're getting ready to meet with another guy about the development of the park. So this whole grand scheme of things is, is, Lord willing and all, it will, it'll all work itself out. Thank you so much, it's wonderful to see you again.
He's coming.
All right, shall we move on to Microsoft three sixty-five?
Uh, we got a couple other.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is correct.
There's some pressing issues, then we'll get with Josh and Brian after that begin. And then those are the pressing issues that we can do there. So we can get that sort of present. What was your guys', uh, the cynicals?
We're ready.
Yes, sir, whatever you guys are ready.
I've got a great place for your community garden at two oh four.
The backyard.
It's got surveillance and we're, uh, we just got our permit for a fence, so.
Well, thank you for offering that, we would take that into consideration. Are you serious?
I've got no plan as far as other than mowing it. No, I appreciate you, uh, giving us the time to address the council, Mr. Mayor. Uh, obviously, you recognize the importance of our concerns.
Yes.
And, uh, I appreciate that. I brought my wife Sue and my son Andrew. Uh, Andrew's gonna talk, uh, I'm just gonna give a real brief, uh, uh, synopsis of what's going on here. Uh, this, this did have a house sign, the house was removed due to a fire. Uh, the property went up for auction in, uh, October. No one bid on it. Property's pretty much worthless as far as real estate, because it does not meet the current code for building another home. So it's just a piece of vacant land. Uh, no one bid. We went back, they had a second auction. All these auctions were legally posted in the newspaper ahead of time. So we went and we bid. Well, we, we met the minimum bid that was required to catch up all, uh, cost taxes, whatever there was associated with this property. We paid approximately sixty-five hundred dollars for this fifty-four feet of property.
So that, that was, that made that property at that time, that you guys knew that you was compliant with everything that was over.
That was it.
It was free, clear title.
Free, clear, out the door.
Uh, then.
They've mentioned your property too, right?
It's adjacent to our property, that was the only reason why we had any interest in it. We've got no desire to do anything but to beautify it. Um, lo and behold, we get our tax statement last week.
Thursday.
Thursday. And this property is divided up into a front and a rear parcel. Well, the annual tax on one parcel is, comes out to about ninety-eight dollars a year. Guess what the front parcel was taxed at?
Ninety-nine dollars.
Almost thirteen thousand dollars. Yeah, I think twelve thousand eight hundred.
So the, the, what?
So this completely blindsided us. Uh, we thought we did everything right. We met with Sheriff Wasley on.
My solution?
Okay.
And I'll take your word for it.
My solution.
We met with him twice and he explained it to us. And from there, I'm gonna turn it over to my son Andrew. He can give you a little bit more detail and then he can ask whatever questions.
Before Andrew speaks, a thank you, if I, if I may, just kind of, because, uh, I, uh, Sue and Andrew come up the other day and, and brought this to my attention. I was as shocked as anybody else up here and then come to realize that what happened was, and I, what I believe was, obviously, when we agreed to remove the house, we assessed that back on the property taxes, for back taxes. Unfortunately, it didn't get there in time for whatever, whether it's the spam or the, the, uh, it's the ransomware or whatever the issues they had up there in Wood County. This should have been already ordered, because Tony, did, did you look into this at all, Matt?
No, I haven't.
Okay, that's okay. Tony, from what I understand, um, had this up in, up at the county, uh, uh, for assessment in, I think September it was submitted.
That's correct.
Almost, I think it's September. So why they wasn't aware of this when they purchased it is, I, I don't know, but I, 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 um, I don't think it's right. I don't think it's right by any reason. Because if that would have been all the tax at the time and they would have shared it with at the time.
It would still be for sale.
Yeah.
What you're saying then, the people that owed you taxes originally never paid it.
No, sir. No, that's not what I'm saying. They paid all the taxes.
They were deceased.
No, no. There was, there was twelve thousand dollars that it cost to remove the house in the garage that we took care of, right? But because it was a blank.
So the expense is off.
We always pass that back on to the, uh, back on to the, the, the property owner, right? Or the property. So what happened was.
So there's something this legislative body needs to be about?
No, sir, no, sir.
Yes, can do, yeah.
Oh, there is something we can do, absolutely. I thought you meant, you was gonna say there was something we did do, no. You did everything right, yes, sir.
So we can take care of it here?
Well, I think so, I think there needs to be some discussion, obviously, we're talking about twelve thousand dollars.
Did you go through a title office to like, how did the title come?
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, so, um, it was just purchased through sheriff's sale. Um, so after that, you know, they did all the paperwork and then they mailed the title or the deed to us. Um, you know, so the, the village had the house torn down in August. Um, and then of course, you know, it went through all the proceedings to go to sheriff's sale. Um, and, you know, so Dad said that we went to the first, no, there was no interest there. Uh, we went to the second one, which was two weeks later, on November seventh. Um, no interest, so we placed a bid on it. Um, but leading up to that, so, um, I wanted to make sure that, you know, everything was covered. And I called the auditor the Monday of November sixth, the day before. And I got clarification one hour before the sheriff's sale that said there was no other assessments.
So this was it, all the bad taxes is everything?
Yeah, so then that confirmed.
It was an hour before you guys bid on it, I'm sorry.
One, yeah, at nine oh seven, the, the auction was at ten AM. And I got a call from the auditor at nine oh seven that said there was no other assessments. Um, so, um.
As far as they knew, right?
Yeah, and, and so that's where, like, if we would have known that, you know, this assessment was sent to the auditor on, in September, we wouldn't have placed a bid on it.
Or even then it was there, right?
Yeah, I mean, that, that twelve thousand dollar assessment was more than what the land should have worked.
Right.
Have you talked with the auditor since you received that bill?
I have, they're the ones that told us to come up here and talk to you guys, because Tony Swartz is the one that put the, that amount on there back in September.
Exactly so, like he should have put that amount on there, it was supposed to be on there, because that's what it costs to take thousands out. One of the things that I would, is there anything else you want to share as far as timelines going in, Andrew?
Yeah, I mean, the biggest issue is, so, we get slapped with this, uh, assessment, and then it's due in ten days. So, I, I think that's another important, you know, factor in this timeline too, um, to kind of push the urgency of this, to figure out what exactly is going to happen, and to see.
So we've got another meeting in ten days.
The, the important thing is our right to know.
Yeah, so we.
Just like someone would purchase a house, you have a right to know if there's a major deed package.
So, so we can't take action here tonight, right, we'll have to take it next Tuesday, right, but I, I believe that this body, yeah, that, um, but I think there's a lot of discussion that still has to take place, on how did this happen, right, like how, how did we assess something? We did everything right on our end, right, we got rid of the, we got rid of the blighted property that you guys was, had to bear for how, I don't know how long, and I.
We already got the tree cut out.
We got that care, we got, so, so, you know, and then we finally got that, and then we end up here, is, I mean, it seemed like everything went so well, we got everything cleaned up, and then all of a sudden, this happens, and this is just a trav- travesty, to ask me, because we, I, I don't know what, does anybody, I mean, what could have been done?
I think the title search is.
Well, that's what I'm confused.
I mean, cause I'm in the middle of buying a property, same kind of thing, and that's.
You're going through a sheriff's sale?
No, I, I'm buying it from the, the owner, but, yeah, I'm doing a title search.
But see, they shouldn't have received, they shouldn't have received the title until free and clear, until that assessment was paid. They shouldn't have even received that, so I'm wondering who dropped the ball?
It's free and clear, we've got the title, right?
No, I understand, I, I understand, but you shouldn't have received it until, so that's what I'm confused, the title company or somebody.
And I appreciate what you said, what I'm saying is, they would have never even purchased the property if they knew when that was there, so, it's not like it was, the, the issue is.
Well, like I'm going through right now, through the lawyer uptown here, and same kind of concept, they never took the house off of.
I don't, no.
Taxes, so, I would have had to, if he wouldn't have found it, the lawyer wouldn't have found it, I would have had to pay for all of it, but he found it before.
I, I worked at the county, and I dealt with land, or the foreclosures, like in the sheriff's sale. What should have happened was, when that was assessed.
Yeah.
It should have been put on the taxes right away.
Yes.
And that property, when they went to sheriff's sale, they are supposed to.
That's the middle bid.
Put the minimum bid as what is assessed to those taxes, okay?
That's exactly right.
It should not have gone to sheriff's sale until all the stuff.
Bingo.
Right, and the title searcher, like Tim said, should have found that before that property was sold. And that twelve thousand dollars, that's what the minimum bid should have been at the sheriff's sale.
Yes, exactly right. And that's the way that, so, so, and thank you, guys, so what we used to do in the Village of North Baltimore is put money back, county, when the big housing war broke right back in two thousand eight, right? The county had a little bit of money that they put back, we matched it, Tony Damon started, I think we put ten thousand or fifteen thousand dollars back, I don't know what it was. It was the match then, because all these houses, we was going through the same thing with, with houses, and we was removing them and everything. And then that's exactly what, when we would come back, we would sell those properties, but we would get the minimum back for what we had in it, right? So, for instance, the county gave us some money to get these down, we paid the money to kind of get them cleaned up, down to the grain or whatever, whatever portion that we had into it, we would sell that property for, for that amount of money and get it back to productive, but that's not the case here, right, the case is.
Someone failed to put the right amount on the sheriff's sale.
That's exactly.
Whether it was, whether it was the sheriff's department, the, the deputy that handles that, or if it was the auditor themselves.
What was her name?
Bill Toss.
So, there, so, I give this a week to.
Can I ask a question?
Please. Oh, well, geez, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm sorry.
The bottom line, and, and I wanna assure you, which I'm sure our mayor already has, uh, that we are here to help. Okay, that's what your council is here for. From what, and maybe we don't know the answer to this question yet. The question is, does that twelve thousand have to be paid?
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I don't, yeah, it has to be, but right now, it has to be.
Half of it by the fourteen.
Yeah, but right now, it has to be paid.
Well, as, as the mayor's already said, we're, you know, deadlines were where.
Yeah, the legislative authority has the authority over this to, to make a decision, and then Matt would have to reach out to them and whatever you guys said. I can't do nothing about it, Matt can't do nothing about it, Josh can't, we can make our recommendations of what we'd like to see happen, but this body is the only ones that can pull the trigger to what you guys think is the right thing to do. I, I agree with you, Mr. Cook, we, we are here to help, that's what we're here to do. We can't always help somebody out of a situation that they gotten themselves into, please hold. They did not get themselves into this situation, right? So, for instance, if somebody gives what exactly, I, I would say, Mr. Engard is saying that they should have did a title search, whatever, I'm not saying they should have should, no. That's, that's, I'm not saying that, I'm saying the taxes was never put on there in the first place too, so even if they were to do the title search, right? If they didn't put them on there, it still wouldn't have been on there, correct, or wrong, I don't know how.
But it, they would have been covered through the lawyer, because they would pay for it if it was through a lawyer, you know, they would.
So, is that what people usually, and I don't know, I've never bought something from a sheriff's auction, does, does every, does anybody that goes to, you know, buy something through a sheriff's sale, get an attorney to check it, I'm not saying they should have should, you, you should have.
See, that's the interplay. Because that could be some of the mayhem from years ago.
Right, like oil leases.
If I were the county, it would, I would think someone at the county's got the responsibility to do that.
Yes, I agree with that.
You don't list it unless you're sure of what you're listing.
I agree with you.
And I think we need to ask our attorney, how, because, you know, before we, we gotta ask him the legality of it.
The legality is a lot.
Well, it's back on Wood County, they're the ones that almost dropped the ball.
Well, yeah, I, yeah.
They don't share it with the auditor.
Right, somebody dropped the ball.
So guys, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree, and we can reach out to them, and, but, but regardless of what he says, but what our, his council says, what maybe our, our, you know, how we're going to respond from Matt's point of view, is, is I agree with you a hundred percent, guys. We still have the, we're on a time crunch here, right, so, just, we just need to, yeah, please don't think that I'm, I'm just saying by next Tuesday, we need to have an, an understanding of what direction we're gonna go, so that they, you know, and we.
Please, Josh, contact the county to, to figure out where the.
It would be more Matt, it would be Matt would do that, yeah, Matt, Matt would reach out.
We need to get it figured out, but if, if it's not paid, this, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be like anybody, it's just gonna be delayed, there's gonna be a penalty, or it could be waived.
And we can waive that penalty.
Yeah, it'd be more the auditor, but can you give me your address, just so I can look at it?
Three hundred each Broadway.
Well, keep in mind, Matt, I appreciate you saying it's the auditor, there's a reason why the auditor told them to come and address you guys, it's, it's because we have the authority to. We're the ones that assessed it, we can do whatever we want with that twelve thousand dollars, I assure you of that. Now, how we go with, with pertaining to this family that's stuck with this, pertaining to how we respond from there, I don't disagree, maybe it's something that our legal needs to get involved with, but.
The way I, we, we've already spent the twelve thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, we did.
Right, so, I, for us just to wipe twelve thousand dollars off the board and say, oh, Wood County's fault, okay, you know, they shouldn't have to deal with it. But somehow, some way, we cannot just give away twelve thousand dollars.
Sure.
And I agree with that, that's why I think we need to contact our attorney, because we're now setting a precedent of what we have done, and we've done.
No, I don't think we are.
Well.
Because, and I'll tell you why I don't think we are, is because this is not a, this is not like you're just forgetting twelve, this is something that, somebody dropped the ball. Setting a precedence is, is following the same thing, with, this has certain circumstances, it doesn't necessarily meet what you would say is setting a precedent. But, and I made that point earlier, if this is their fault, right, in my opinion, I would say, I would say.
I totally understand, they've done everything correctly, we did everything correctly, Wood County did not.
Yeah.
Right, so right now, we have, they sent it back to us, and said, hey, this is North Baltimore's problem, let their council take care of this.
Yes.
So, now, we have to decide as a body.
We don't have to right now.
Not today, but by next week, cause we're under time restraint, but by next week, we have to decide.
But guys, I'm sorry, um, any fees or any penalties that go upon this, I'm quite certain we can make a recommendation to win, very, very confident. Would you agree with that, since you worked up there, guys, I don't.
Well, with the legal notices being put into paper weeks and weeks before the sale, did North Baltimore have any responsibility to verify what the taxes and assessments that there were gonna be?
I would say nobody, Mark, I would say.
We were in between village administrators, and I think, uh, like you said, our accountant was on the way up.
Tony was still here, Tony was still, yeah, Tony was still here all the way up till, as a matter of fact, first of this morning.
All right.
So, just a couple of days ago, so we're still, and we're still discussing that, um, so I don't, yeah, so we did everything we were supposed to do, right, and.
I know it got up there.
Yes, I guess that's what our response was.
It gets to us at the time where, you know, the sheriff said, here's what you gotta pay if you want.
Agreed, I, I agree, you guys did nothing wrong, and I appreciate you guys buying the property, right, I mean, um, unfortunately, this happened, and we just need to, we need to address it, and. I mean, yes, we need to address it, one way or the other, yes, sir, we need to address it.
Well, that's fine.
It would not sit in vacant forever, probably, if we wouldn't have bought it, because no one wants a, it's, it's worthless, so.
Yep.
All right, did you have anything else?
Well, can I ask a question, and maybe, maybe you don't have an answer to it, but, the way, the way I think is, I think, well, this could be the result, this could be the result, this could be the result. What possible solutions have you thought of?
Give my monies back?
No one wanna buy it for twenty thousand dollars?
Right, or I'll sell it back to the county for what I paid them for. I'm still gonna be looking at that lot, I'm just not gonna plant flowers and.
Right.
Fix it up.
Is that an option, that you guys give that back to the county?
Sure, sure.
You have to, you would have to file a court case.
Well, I wanna get out of it for the least amount of effort and cost, I mean.
You would have to file.
Believe me, getting a tax bill for thirteen thousand dollars caused us a lot of sleep.
Yeah, I imagine, I'm sorry, the gentleman.
But on the other side, you want the property still, you just want it on the original.
I, I'd like to have it with the ninety-nine dollar tax bill, not the thirteen thousand.
So, so, but that could be an option, that you go back to the county and say, look, I want my money back, you take this property back, and then they can put it back up, and they can figure it out, right, like. I mean, and I appreciate what you're saying.
Obviously, I'll be getting a lawyer, and that's gonna cost me.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, let me ask you this.
Like I said, they told us that it's, the law goes back to your court.
They said that you guys had the authority to remove that.
I know what we have the authority to do.
Assessment, Mark.
Yeah.
I think.
How much would you guys?
Who received the fines for purchasing?
Let's, let's say we, we were gonna make a deal here.
The county, the, what?
What, are you guys willing to, to, to put some money up towards the tax bill, um, if we're willing to drop money off? I, I'm only asking this for discussion purposes.
Uh, we hadn't discussed it, so, I mean, I.
Because if we knew that there was a possible number that you guys would be okay with being responsible for, maybe that would make a, a lesser hit on, on the village. And that's.
Wouldn't even be close to even talking about.
The whole twelve thousand, the whole twelve thousand goes back to the Village of North Baltimore's assessment, all the other stuff would go to whoever, so is any, any, um, like, I would say, administration costs, any other taxes? Like, when you guys paid that six thousand dollars, like, what, where did that money go to, is what Dee is asking.
Uh, well, actually, I have a.
I'm sure that you have that.
Um.
Breaks a dollar, it goes to.
I'm thinking Wood County said, go back to your village, because they know at some point, something isn't right on their, like, something went wrong. So they're gonna say, go back to the village, cause if we're willing to waive it, then they don't have to take any responsibility whatsoever, plus, I'm wondering, it's done, it's over.
Well, I called them the day before we got the taxes, and asked them, because I didn't, cause I, every time I get on the auditors, it's still listed at two oh four North feature.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm assuming that we were gonna be paying for a house on that property.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
Which I was mindful, because I knew it would come back, when it all went through the courts. They never told me that that's what our tax bill was the day before, they just told me to go through the village, it's up to them to take that life or that demolition.
The twelve thousand dollars is through the assessment of removing the house, and keep in mind, regardless, think about this, guys. So what happens to that property when it's, it's, who, it's still, twelve thousand dollars is there, you think anybody else is gonna buy it?
Heck no.
But, but the twelve thousand dollars is still gonna be there, so what we need to do from now on, in my opinion, is, it's a little bit, it's along the same lines. We put down, we, I was sharing this with Mr. Engard over the weekend, we put, we should be putting back money for this very reason. For ten thousand dollars to get rid of these dilapidated houses that our poor residents have to look at for, I know since I, the first year that I've worked out, I've removed three of them. Why weren't they removed before that, is my question, right, okay, it wasn't, we got them down. I want ten thousand dollars starting next year, we can start it this year and take it off of their costs, if we deem that necessary, but we need to start getting rid of these dilapidated houses, these blighted conditions within our community, I would like to at least put back ten thousand dollars a year. Um, they should have never had to look at them for the, for the time that they did, right, and unfortunately, we have some people that, that just, um, abandoned their homes, right? And we're stuck with it, so we need to come up with how we're gonna deal with it. Like I shared with you, I know we put at least ten thousand dollars out in the past, I'd like to continue that, but, to remove these dilapidated houses and these blighted conditions, when people just abandon their properties and leave it for their neighbors as their eyesores. With that, yeah, and, and there is some funding up, up in, um, Wood County, uh, but I, I called the gentleman. In the past, Dave Steiner, he told me, get in line, right, so, um, yeah, that's, that's freaking out me, anyhow.
Well, there's two people that are our concerns here.
So, keep, keep, I just wanna say this, Mr. Cook.
These, these, this wonderful family here, they don't need to be punished, and neither do our citizens.
And I appreciate that, but think about this, guys, at the end of the day, there's still twelve thousand dollars, if we're not willing to do something with it, and I'm not suggesting we do or we don't, there's still twelve thousand dollars on that property, who's gonna buy? It's still there, so that goes back on there, so now we're looking at, you guys paid six thousand for it, right, upfront? Sixty-five hundred plus the twelve thousand, you're talking about twenty thousand dollars for a piece of, who's gonna, who's gonna buy?
We are allowed as a legislative body to, correct?
Again, yes, you are, you assessed it.
And then what, what, where, what fund will that come out? What fund will take the hit?
Whatever fund that it came out of, it was probably the one that be assessed, I don't know what, I don't know where it poured from, was it the.
So who got the six thousand again, who did you say actually got?
We made it back out to Wood County Sheriff.
Yeah, and then they dispersed it from there, um, a portion of it, well, the main thing is to cover the forty-two hundred dollars in back taxes that were on that property. Um, and then, the sheriff has their assessment fees, um, and then, any remaining balance, um, was supposed to go to, uh, be split up between like the schools, the local school. So, the local, like, ND got a portion of that, out of that sheriff's sale too. Um, so, um, that, that sixty-five hundred bucks, the minimum bid was.
Sounds like we knew, so how much did the sheriff get for, unfortunately, not doing their, I can't.
That's what I'm wondering, I mean, it's just.
I mean, why are they getting their assessment, they don't want us to get ours, that's what, we're the ones that made the mistake.
So, the sheriff. Received. Uh, the sheriff received a hundred twenty-five dollars, and the treasurer received forty-two dollars.
So basically, it went to that.
Oh, and then the clerk of court and the sheriff also received, uh, just over eleven hundred dollars.
Who did?
The, the clerk of court also received a little over eleven hundred dollars.
So, how is that possible?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think they need to help.
I don't, Dee, I don't disagree with any of that, that they, they should be responsible for it, it should have been on there, and they wouldn't have been in this, that's their job. We, we did what we were supposed to do, right, we did our end, somebody dropped the ball, these guys are stuck with it, I don't know what the right answer is. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, whether they have it on their taxes, it's still on that property.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, regardless, it's still on that property, whether they revert, whether they turn it back to the county, and the county accepts it, that's still on there.
Well, my opinion is, Tuesday, we take care of the problem with them, and then we work out maybe getting some of the money back from this other situation.
And what we're gonna do going forward, as far as, if, you know, because it's not just, it's not just a matter of, of. And what we're gonna do going forward as far as, if, you know, because it's not just, it's not just a matter of, of fixing this, trying to recover some of that money, but now how are we handling these blight project, properties in the village? In the future, when you got people that just abandoned their properties.
Well, I think too, when we, when we assess a property, unfortunately, I think we're gonna have to follow up to make sure it actually got filed.
But it did get filed, did it?
No, I know it got filed, but it didn't get put on there, and I think we may have to fol- follow up to make sure they actually put it on the property, but, um.
That's a very good point, I've never heard of this ever happening before.
No, I was.
Right, I mean, I've never, I knew that we've assessed properties before, there was never an issue with it because they knew.
But they didn't purchase the sheriff's sale?
And it was purchased.
It's in the Toledo blade as, uh, December twenty-third.
Yeah, so the sheriff's sale occurred on November seventh, um, and then it cleared, um, on December twenty-third.
Six weeks later, we're on twenty thousand.
And you guys didn't know that though, even up to this time, you guys didn't know, you just got it in the mail, right?
Right, we didn't know nothing was wrong until last week.
In the past, Mayor, I mean, you know, uh, the houses what, uh, what you had poured down before.
Yeah, yeah.
Did those houses go back to the owners?
No, no, no.
They were.
So, I, I, I think, I know that some of them we took ownership of. Um, and I'll tell you, unfortunately, the person that can talk about it more than me was Mr. Wicker, because he's the one that had the final cleanup on them, right? Um, but I can remember that we would put them up for sale, so we somehow took some ownership, and I don't know that it's all of them, I think it had, there was two funding sources. One was the county, one was the village, kinda coordinated them together, um. I don't remember how.
Did we buy them first at the sale?
No, no, sir, no, it had something to do with the taxes, how, how it reverted or. I, 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 I don't know, I don't remember exactly how that transpired. I do know that we took ownership of some of them, I'm almost positive, um. I don't know if we took ownership, but I know that anything, so I remember coming back and it was like, four thousand dollars for this property. That was, or six thousand dollars, take it down, clean it up, uh, uh, um, straw and seed it. And then, um, that's what it sold for. Said you had to at least, I don't know if that went to us or if that went to the county. So, I just know that it went back into, um, the properties went back into.
Well, we've paid income tax for thirty-five years here, we've paid our property tax for thirty-five years here on time, but this one's a little steep.
Well, I hope you guys aren't upset with us, I mean, this is, yeah, I mean, this is, we gotta get this worked out, um, and, and.
How do we proceed from here?
Do you know?
Do you want us to come to the next meeting?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, I would recommend it.
Do you know who you spoke with at the auditor's office?
I don't remember.
No, I don't know.
If you think of it, you know, give me a call or a telephone.
I mean, the sad, sad thing is, is I literally just deleted the voicemail from them like three weeks ago.
Okay.
Probably not even knowing this was coming, yeah.
I got an email, and my work emails and my voicemail was full, so I went through and deleted it.
Well, we'll work on this on our end starting tomorrow, Matt, can you please start reaching out and seeing what we can find out on our end? Get the legislative body more information to work with and how this happened and who should be all accountable and we'll, we'll, we'll see. I think the worst ca- the worst case scenario is somehow you guys just give it back to the county or whatever, they give you guys your sixty-five hundred dollars back and, and, and.
So, did we get, Dan, did you get us that twenty-five dollars for the fence?
Yeah.
No take back.
Yeah, absolutely, we should, because you guys paid for a permit to put a fence up on a property that you guys made.
And I split rail fence too, with lavender growing out all along.
If they don't own the property, yes, they would be reimbursed, yes, it would.
I'm just saying what it says in the code board.
Well, I'm just saying, you're not gonna.
I know what you mean, I don't want, I want to get the money back too, I'm just saying.
You know, you know, if you put up a ceiling and a fence state by, you, you got my boat.
Well, I'll put up the fence, I'll get the water, you get the community garden to buy the property.
That's what I would do, yes, I would, I mean, I would, you guys, I'd maybe reach out to an attorney and, and see what, and maybe get some information prior to next Tuesday's meeting. Say, hey, look, this is what we're hoping.
Maybe we don't have to.
I don't think that.
Depending on the outcome of the.
Yeah, I, I don't know that, uh, they would even charge you for a consultant fee, I don't know, I don't speak, we had to, but.
Do you have a lawyer or attorney?
No.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to the, to the auditor and whoever else we have to. Matt, we'll start him tomorrow, see what we can get up, get council more information, and at the end of the day, they make the decision.
Alright, we'll be at next Tuesday.
Thank you very much, you're tired, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, and consideration.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Did you wanna go on to Josh and Brian?
Please do, please, we get them out here, they've had a long day.
Josh, did you wanna?
Uh, yes, we got a guy in the public works department that's had a commercial spray applicator license for quite some time. He's never been compensated for it, and.
Were that additional license?
The, the license period.
Yeah, you're saying he hasn't, he's had it, we've never.
Nothing.
Recognized it with any kind of a.
Correct. So, I'd like to see that happen, I talked to the mayor and the administrator about it, so whatever we get it.
When, when you're speaking about a license, is it one license?
It's, it's four and one particular, so it's a core license, but you can just keep adding on, and he's got three, what do we got? Three other ones. We got industrial vegetation, which allows us to spray all the weeds, we got vectors, which allows us to spray the mosquitoes, and we got aquatic, which allows us to treat the bodies of water.
If he has to go out and help out.
Yes, and.
How much, how much are we talking?
Uh, I think fifty cents is fair.
For each a license?
No, 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 for, for, for the one, all together, it's all, it's all in one.
But was there something in there before for licenses?
Fifty cents an hour, like.
Fifty cents an hour on this.
I was like, why are we fifty cents?
Over, over fifty cents an hour for all these licenses?
I really get off on that, what? Like, you didn't want him, but you're like, yeah, it's like.
There's actually certified license applications in one. Um, Brian, what, when you're, when you guys, did you guys receive anything if they was to receive this mic, this, they only get, they get seventy-five cents or a dollar fifty for a license?
A dollar, a dollar fifty for every license.
I know that's, I know that's different, they have school for that.
A dollar fifty for the first license, depending on what's one of those, water waste water, and then a dollar for every additional license.
So, so this, go ahead.
If I'm not mistaken, and you, I don't know how far it would have been backed, but I believe when Don Lessick held that license, I believe he was being compensated for that license also.
Yeah, we have to.
But you'd have to go back and look, or he retired in two thousand and seventeen.
You should look at this, we can't do it without him, right?
Um. We can or can't, we could, we could do it without him, because Brian and I hold the licenses, but Brian and I ain't gonna be here for.
Yeah, but that's what I mean, it's not something that I can go do.
Correct. Correct.
Right, yes, you gotta have a license.
So, without a license, we cannot spray for any of that.
Right.
Um, and we've done it, uh, for roughly two years. Under Don Lessick's license, when he wasn't even a village employee anymore.
Yeah, so they, yeah, yeah, don't, don't say it publicly, please. Um, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Um, uh, so this actually encompasses four or five different applications that are important. One of them is actually, if we needed him to go and treat the reservoir, he is, um, and I asked to make sure, so, make sure that he is trained to treat the reservoir, please. If we're gonna pay him for it, I wanna make sure he can do it, even though, just because he holds a license, somebody else will do it or whatever. I wanna be, make sure that he, because if he holds a license, I wanna make sure that if you guys aren't here, at least he can oversee and make sure it's done right for paying for it.
Correct.
Right, and then the, the mosquito spray and, and any other ones that you guys are talking about, do you know which ones they apply or not?
The, the licenses?
Yeah, the, the, the four, the, the four applications to this one license.
The one is core, it's just simply getting a license, and then industrial vegetation is the second one, which allows us to swab, spray the weeds, right of ways, cemeteries. Vector, these things are, they're, they're identifiable by numbers and letters, and I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Vector.
Hazmat, I'm sure I identify it.
We can spray the mosquitoes, and then the aquatic, we can treat the bodies of water. So. It's important.
I don't remember.
I'd have to look at.
I don't remember, but I, Brian.
No.
So, is this an unreasonable request to?
So, are we talking two dollars then?
No, we're talking fifty cents, period.
Not, not that you're saying.
Nope, fifty cents for a dollar per hour is worth.
Well, that's, to me, that's a no brainer.
Well.
I guess, I mean, if, if it looks like it's something that's gonna be approved, we could put it in, the first thought is put it in the wage resolution.
Absolutely.
One terminology there where, like, specifying, like, the fifty cents is if you have all four, or I mean, or, how do you wanna mean?
It comes with that license, so when you, when they go and test, Matt, um, they go for this license, but the overall license encompasses these four different applications. Right, so when they go into the classes, from what I understand, talking to you guys, when you guys went to the classes, you learned all these different applications during that class, that gave you this license for these different.
There's actually, there's a bunch of them, but that should be all that we have. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's the ones that pertain to us.
Yes.
I guess, I was wondering, can you go and get certified for less than all four, I guess, of them?
Oh, well, it's really not worth it, I mean. And you could, but. Yeah.
Getting like technical, like, if you have one guy and then you, what if you have a second employee? You know, you already have yourself, and you have this, this, this would be the second one, what if there's a third employee, are we gonna try to?
No, we're saying, I think we see that we need.
Limited to one additional, or that's.
Yeah, so I think what we need to do is the department heads are required to get it, right? I think that's what we need to do, and then one additional person within the department, maybe the public works, but I agree with what you're saying, because. If everybody goes and gets this license and we don't need it, right, you know, then that's, that doesn't do us no good, right?
We would have to take the term one additional.
Yeah, one additional, so I think in the wage resolution, we should mandate that the department heads of those two departments have it, and then, because you guys gotta have it, right? For applying.
I got it because we need to have it for.
Applying to the reservoir.
But, but if Josh had it, I don't need it, that's what I'm saying, so, but I got it for that purpose. They, he got it for the purpose of spraying for weeds, and then Dan.
And mosquitoes.
Yep, and then Dan got it also, um.
So, I, I, I like where Matt's at and saying, look, we don't want everybody getting this, because it's, we don't, we won't use it. We're only gonna use the one person, so, so. So, yeah, we'll get that in the wage resolution.
Right.
That'll be something for consideration for Tuesday's meeting.
Well, thank you guys for considering that.
You do?
Yes, I talked with the assistant superintendent of the Bowling Green Electric today about the bucket truck, as, as you all know, the superintendent's.
Sick.
In the hospital.
I hope he's okay.
Yeah, um, he's, he's going to be looking into some info for me as far as a price, and the soonest we can get this, if we're able to get it. But he said the board doesn't meet until Monday, so if he doesn't have anything, any info for me before then, he'll know something on Tuesday.
Okay, so we're.
And then, another thing, and it always goes back to a bar to put it in, a building to put it in.
Yeah, agreed.
Something to think about.
Agreed a hundred percent.
And that's all, that's all I got, but Josh, was, was that CSX stuff, was that on that agenda, were we gonna?
Uh, we just.
Or is that at a standstill, or?
Um.
Not, the mowing is gonna be discussed.
Mowing will be discussed, uh, but we don't, I don't have a good agreement with council or review yet, that just yet.
We did, we did meet, um, the, the tree commission, Matt, um, and I'll share this now because it falls under the very much public works department. Talked about planting trees in the boulevards, um, we don't wanna do that anymore, I hope you guys support that, right? It's tearing up our infrastructure, so we're gonna have a policy that's gonna reflect that for you guys to consider. Um, we're, we're, we're actually gonna limit on, um, private property, and, and we gotta be careful here, but, but. They, they can plant, anybody can plant on rural property, we're saying, it can't be planted twelve feet near a roadway, right? And that should cover sidewalks with the twelve feet from roadway, and it must be offset, all trees that get planted from now on on private property have to at least be offset by six feet from an alley. So, that they're not undermining our alleys, right? So, it should just protect our infrastructure. What we also discussed was, um, we've got a lot of trees that we need to be planting, we've removed trees in the past two years, we need to start planting the trees. Um, we, we are going to be, we can get on the website, right?
I figured out how to navigate.
Okay, so we're gonna be, Josh and I will be working on that, getting some trees to hopefully present for planting where we would like to plant them. I'd like, we'd like to present the legislative authority through the policy, the new policy, hopefully that we're, that you guys will consider, um. So, if you remove ten trees, we are required by our ordinance to plant ten trees. Where we plant the ten trees, what does it matter to us, right? So, meaning, I wanna plant them in the parks, we got some beautification up, I wanna plant them in the green space, but rather than fill all that up right away, I think that it should first go to the first, uh, first offered to the person whose tree we're removing from the boulevard, for whatever reason. So, we should ask the homeowner, would you like a tree on your property, and if they say yes, then, because we're removing one of their trees, then we gotta just let them know, you can't, you can't plant it. Twelve feet from a roadway or, and then our people's gonna come and plant for them, we're already, we have to do it anyhow, so we don't care where.
You can't. You have to be so far from power line.
Yeah, and.
That's why my trees.
And then, and then our offset will actually take care of that, right? Twelve feet from the property, from the, from any roadway and six feet from, it should take care of all that, I hope, we hope, right, for the most part. Um, and then, this all goes with getting the bucket truck to trim the trees down the alley and all that stuff, but, um, um. If the homeowner doesn't want it, where we remove their tree, we would like to open it up, so we can come up, we'll advertise them, right? And anybody that wants a tree on their property, we, they can come up and say, yes, I would like that tree. We have, if we plant, if we remove forty trees, we gotta plant, plant trees, so we don't care where they go, right? I, I wouldn't think, or they do with the, any trees that are left over, maybe possibly goes into the park or, um, down in our green space, down by the sewer department, right? And anywhere else that anybody can think of where it wouldn't tear up our infrastructure, like, we look at the, um, the pond, the pond needs trees around it, I mean, it needs to. I mean, if you look at that thing over, overview, it, it's just. So, we wanna do something to make that better, so, um, what else did we discuss during that? Um, that, that was it, so I just wanted to show that, so there will be a, a proposal or a policy coming for your guys' consideration. Um, maybe we kick that to the, um, policy, um. The, uh, the, the, the policy committee, or it's a policy committee. That's all that I had for Josh, did you have anything else?
No.
Thanks, Dave. Mr. Richmond.
No.
He's looking up like that.
Alright, anyone else have any questions?
I didn't, I didn't see it, so I, Josh showed me and I seen some CSX stuff on there, right? I didn't know that the full members of the class, I didn't know.
We're just gonna touch on it, uh, we haven't gotten too far with, uh, our conversations, agreements or bidding.
Does anyone else have any questions for Josh? Okay, how about Brian?
Hey, thank you, CJ. I know we spoke in the past, uh, latter part of last year about purchasing pickup trucks for the water sewer department. Um, I got prices for, uh, an F two fifty, three-quarter ton pickup truck, and a Ford Ranger also. Uh, those are all coming at state bid pricing. I also got prices on GMCs, which is about, uh, twenty thousand dollars more than what the Fords were, so I more recommend that we purchase some, uh, two pickup trucks from Reinecke Ford. Um, currently, right now, both trucks, trucks can be purchased at ninety-one thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars. Uh, those, both of those trucks would come with an eight-year, hundred thousand mile warranty. Um, if anything would go wrong, Reinecke will come pick up the truck, uh, give us a truck to use while they have ours. Uh, be zero deductible out of pocket on any warranty work for those eight years, a hundred thousand miles.
Brian, that ninety-one thousand is state bid price?
It's state bid price for two, for two trucks.
Yep, two trucks.
Uh, so, Reinecke offered, or is going to give us, uh, twenty-two thousand dollars for the ramp, which is what I trade in on. But you know, I've, I've complained about that truck for the last two years and the money we put into that thing. Um, so, we paid twenty-four thousand for the truck, uh.
We're gonna take a two thousand dollar loss, right?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah, so, uh, that leaves us with like a total of like sixty-nine thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars. Currently, right now, I had started budgeting for pickup trucks, uh, several years back, so currently, right now, we have roughly, uh, thirty-six thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars budgeted for pickup trucks. Um, so, we would have to appropriate roughly thirty-two thousand four hundred and ten dollars. Um, I would, I would say that we pull that out of the sewer capital improvement funds, um, there's.
Hold it?
The thirty-two thousand, yeah, that's, that's a sewer truck only.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so the Ranger is a sewer truck, pretty much sewer truck only.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that, that's, that would be covering the cost basically for. Uh, yeah. So that, that's, that would be covering the cost basically for, uh, that Ford Ranger.
Sure.
Um, currently, right now, they're driving a two thousand and six Chevy Canyon. Um, it's pretty beat up, rusty. Um.
Guess it's two thousand.
Uh, it's got roughly eighty thousand miles on it, um, but it's not gonna be worth anything. So I asked Josh if they would be able to use it to get. Trash out of like the parks where they're not having to lift everything up into the bigger trucks. And he said that would work great for them. So.
Is it still running okay?
Yeah, yeah, it still runs.
So we, we'd rather get that to them or I?
Yeah.
Or, or can we auction it or something?
You're probably only gonna get maybe a thousand bucks for it. It's, it's by gas.
We would, we would have more of the use for it.
Yeah, you'd get more benefit out of it. And then if something blows up, then you just take it in the junkyard. Um, that's my thoughts on it. Uh, so, yeah, uh, I'll get with Matt tomorrow. So we can look at, uh. The appropriations that you guys would have to approve at your council meeting for these, or, and/or the purchase of these vehicles. Um, but, um, I think they're both needed. Uh. The plan was to be able to get a truck every, every six, seven years. Um, but since we've had so much trouble with that ram, I just want it to go. Cause right now there's no warranty on it. It's just costing us more. I put more money into that truck than I have the other three trucks we have.
So Brian, are you saying that you're replacing the three thousand six, right? So and then you're just getting rid of this? Why do we keep putting in these?
Yeah, correct. Yes. So, um.
You said you can get the Ford, the big truck quickly and then the other?
Yeah, the, the, actually the F two fifty's sitting down there now. Uh, my guys already test drove it. They love it. Um, they're just, they're just holding on to it. Uh, the Ranger, they'll have to locate that for us, uh, because we want white.
Is it one, two fifty and one Ranger?
Yes, yep. Both four wheel drive. So both be four wheel drives. Um. Especially out of sewer plant, you know, depending on how busy the street department ours is, whether they can get. And we have had a lot of snow in the last few years, but it drifts really bad out there. And those guys will have to actually. Park out by the road and walk to the plant because it's all dripped and shot. So at least they'll be able to get in and out of there. And especially if there's alarm or something in the middle of the night, we don't want our guys to have to park and walk all the way back to the plant. So. That's why we're getting four wheel drives for both vehicles. Um, and that's all I have on the pickup trucks. Um, we also spoke last November or so about the aeration sprayer for the THM removals. Uh, that we had one replaced and the other one went bad. Um, so we'll have to get that replaced this year. Um. So currently, right now, to replace that sprayer is nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Um, roughly. Uh, ten thousand dollars with shipping, uh, it's three hundred and seventy five dollars for shipping for that, uh, piece of equipment. It's huge. Um, they have to come up flatbed. Uh, and we also had those two mixers out, one in our clear well, one in our, uh, tower. Uh, currently, right now, the price for, um, those units is, um, one of them's twelve thousand dollars. And one of them's eight thousand dollars, about eight, eight hundred actually. Uh, but I, I, I'm more just purchase one. Uh, because they could rebuild one, uh, for roughly forty five hundred bucks. So, and have pretty much about the same warranty. So I want to replace one, get a brand new one. Put it in the clear well, pull that one out, have one rebuilt, get it up in the tower. And then we can pull the other one down. And then if one goes bad, we already have one out that we could send to get rebuilt. Uh, leave time for rebuilds, about two weeks. Uh, and well, it'll be a little longer than that because this gentleman's getting ready to go to Japan on vacation. So. Um, probably about a month out to be able to get, to get this stuff. Uh, but we'd like to have them in, uh, before our April THM testing. We typically turn our sprayers on end of March, our first test, testing comes in April. And then we run it throughout the summer through the fall to keep, keep the THM levels down. Um. In the winter, they're typically not there because you don't have all the bacteria anymore, microorganisms, because the water's colder, they don't survive. So you don't have those issues in the winter. But that's really all I have. I did, oh, saying that, I did budget for this year to replace these. Cause we knew, we were speaking about it last November and I did put it in this year's budget to actually buy two new sprayers. Or mixers and one sprayer. What's that?
Where's those sprayers at?
Um, the one sprayer is in the clear well, clear well number two.
Okay.
Uh, which we have to have a company come in and put them in for us.
Okay.
Uh, and then one mixer's in clear well number one and the other mixer's out in Grant Road.
Okay.
Tower.
Thank you.
But the money is budgeted, was budgeted for this to be replaced this year. All I really have.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, I have one. Um. I don't know where we are. I've got something in my head that's probably wrong. But, um, where are we as far as with our. Amount of water we make to, um, economic expansion?
Uh, we, we.
Capacity, is that what you're asking?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, so currently, uh. We, we, the, the water treatment plant, the village itself uses roughly six hundred, seven hundred thousand gallons of water.
For the residents.
The residents, the, the factories. Uh, currently, right now, uh, the village of McCollum is using roughly a hundred and seventy five thousand gallons a day. But with our contract, we have to basically hold three hundred thousand gallons from them. Um, so basically we're at about a million gallons. Uh, our plant is actually designed about one point six, if everything's, can operate at one point six, uh, to be. Uh, on the safe side, I would say we'd have roughly about three hundred thousand gallons a day. That, which would put us at about one point three, which would give us about three hundred thousand threshold, uh, give or take, uh.
And that wouldn't really stress the plant, Brian, at them levels? It's when you start getting up into the one point six.
Correct.
One point five, one point four, five, you start stressing the plant.
Correct, correct.
And as outdated as our stuff is, we probably don't want to stress our plants.
Correct, yes.
I mean, I've talked, I've talked to Brian about this, right? Like wondering what we could push. So, yeah, so it's probably three hundred, possibly three fifty.
Yeah, we, we could probably push about three fifty that we could sell right now. Um, which would be huge if we could do that. Um. A- a- and that, and that's just, you know, basically turning our pumps up, you know, letting them pump harder than what they have in, uh, the twenty years I'm in here.
Let the big dogs eat.
To, to be honest, to be honest, we've never tried to push them to see if they'll, i- if our raw pumps will pump what. Twelve hundred gallon a minute. We, I've never tried to see.
Do you think our distribution could handle?
Our distribution, uh, yeah, because pressure wouldn't change.
Okay.
Uh.
Perfect.
Yeah, pressure wouldn't change because we would never.
Because of the demand.
Yeah, our demand and our tower levels would remain the same. And that's where the pressure actually comes from. So.
What, what about, hopefully it doesn't happen, but, uh, how much water is it? Tichin, is that how you pronounce it? How much do they use?
Sir, number one.
I'm not, I don't, I don't have that number in front of me. We, we looked at it last week.
Yep.
Uh, but I don't have that number in front of me right now. They're, they're a pretty big user, for sure. And we hopefully don't see them go. And rumor is they are, but I, I don't know how true that is. I haven't spoken with anybody from out there. I don't know if Josh has or not, but.
Well, here's my thought. Why I ask it is we have the one building which has yet to be purchased or leased there on, on, uh. Inslee, am I on the right road?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Okay, but there's three other spots there. And the same out at North Point, we've got UPS, but there's three other spots.
But we don't, we don't supply, we don't supply North Point.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all Northwest Water Service. You're welcome. It's all Northwest Water Service.
Um, my understanding is, uh, the, the bill, the spec buildings that Hancockwood built. They're not you, they're not looking for big water users. They want big electric. So. More than likely it's gonna be, you know, restroom, shower, stuff like that, out, out at that facility. It's not gonna be, you know. Twenty thousand gallons a day type place. I, I don't think.
But, yeah.
But I don't know.
But that's all right, because that's how economic development starts, right? That might introduce, that might entice somebody else to come. The wa, the important thing is the water lines are out there. If we didn't have to put them in, right? That's the development, right? They're out there for other people to tie into. To sell that water, right? That's, that's the key to it. So we just gotta get attracted. And Lord willing that happens. So. The only other question I got for you is how are we coming with the manhole that sheets?
I have not, I haven't heard anything back today at all. I spoke with him yesterday.
If I just want to make sure something we, we jetted it out?
We flushed it out.
Flushed it out, everything's clean.
Correct. Everything was clean as of last Thursday.
So did, where we've seen the camera in it looked like the pipe was not in the manhole or shifted?
It looks like it was shifted. And then what we're seeing on the, the, the camera is the concrete lip.
Yeah, of the manhole.
Yes, of the manhole where the pipe shifted.
Okay.
Is, is what it looked like to me on the camera and then when I, what not in there it looked.
We just need to find out if it was, if it was, uh, if, if, if was, uh. If it was on our end or.
Correct. Uh, I, I know Brian Maluch sent an email yesterday, right? Was that yesterday? I got it yesterday. So it was Friday.
About Palmer?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was maybe Friday.
Okay. We got it. Monday.
Emergency, it's just update going up.
Um, so, and then he was supposed to, Brian was supposed to let us know when Jim Palmer or whatever, whoever his employee is was coming. Was the last I seen.
So that project out there got camera by their contractor, right? By their contractor. And there was a, there was an issue that was found in the pipe. They didn't talk. It was on our end or on their end or whose end. So we contacted people there to come look at it. I'm just getting an update on. On where, but it will, it will definitely get addressed. So. Swear to God. Thank you, Brian. That's all that I have.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, y'all. I'm good evening. Thank you.
Want to move on to Microsoft three sixty five?
Yes, I'll try to be pretty equipped with everything else going on. Uh, so I sent this email to everyone in council and the mayor. Um, seventeenth of January, uh, just wanna make sure you're aware. Uh, there's a link to a YouTube video basically about cyber security. Uh, security awareness, also the same video that I saw on Keep Favor, uh. The state's website. Uh, security awareness training quotes, uh, that was also attached to this email. Uh, that's for thirteen hundred thousand, thirteen hundred. Annually, uh, that was basically in regards to, we see there, uh, lessons to improve cyber security awareness, training consistent video sessions. Uh, basically, they're sending everyone who has a, like Baltimore dot net email, uh. Emails that they clicked on, they have to do security training, basically. They basically failed, uh, to not click on something suspicious. Uh, so like, for example, when we have an incident where, uh, someone pretending to be the mayor here was emailing people in council. Uh, maybe they added a link to that, uh, and then Mr. Richmond clicks on that link. He probably shouldn't have because it's obviously suspicious. And the mayor clicks on the link. You have to now do the security training or security awareness.
But if we don't click on that, then they can't get into our system. Am I, do I understand that or am I wrong?
Pretty much. I mean, no system is a hundred percent safe.
Right, right, right. So, so what I'm asking that, Mr. Bender is, like me, I'm the type of guy that I'm gonna click on it, right? I'm in there, I'm, I'm not there, right? So what I'm saying, but if somebody's out there trying. If somebody's out there trying to hack us, if, if, if they, if I, if, they can't hack our system for the most part unless I click on that and now I'm letting them in. Is that the way to understand it?
Pretty much. These are, these are prevention methods.
So, so is that probably, and I don't want to assume, but is that probably what could have happened when, when, when they got? Dog ransom, like there was somebody clicked on something, they shouldn't have left there and then it was all, okay.
I don't remember my attack, but I can answer that.
No, that's.
It could have been one of the ways.
But now we know who to blame, but they have.
There's probably a saving back.
Matt and I, the mayor, I'm not sure how you guys are doing, but we get spam emails all the time. Uh, please pay this. Get your business with something like that.
To be honest with you, I called them all the time. Like, hey, guys, is this something we own? They're like, no, get rid of it. I'm sorry.
Yes. So we're being very careful, uh, but again, it's not a hundred percent. People make mistakes.
Well, I just have a quick, quick point. I, I have it here and I'm not looking at it because I don't know what it is, but I got one like from Ryan Cotto, USA first and grant opportunity. Why would I be getting that?
I don't know. You can forward it to me or you can forward it to, uh, Intech, uh, and it'll be something one email, which is not, it was part of this email chain, but I cut it off. Uh, you can send it to probably Craig or some from Intech basically.
Because that's what we have. If we have something to rethink, especially the one that's for the mayor.
Delete it.
I didn't know if I should forward it so they can figure out where it's coming from.
If you offer a fact, it's spam, delete it, block it, whatever. If you, if you think, well, maybe I should respond to this, but I'm afraid to. Send it to Intech, copy me, go from there.
Okay.
The good news is the former mayor is no longer being held in Iberia. I sent them on the. Yeah, they're, they're.
So this one, Becky Walter, can I respond to that one?
Yes.
I would be very. Okay, going forward, tell us about it. The three sixty five quotes, uh, basically, uh, the more expensive version has more elements to help secure us. But I also want to bring up the last bullet there is basically there's no less expensive email option. So we use an email called Intech and with all the, not net, but just emailing or scanning the email from our, our, our printer over here. That's all it does. Just get an email with that document. We would have to buy the more expensive hundred fifty dollar version. And a hundred fifty bucks. For that included almost every email, the less expensive version, uh, which we can use email. And then key features of three sixty five GCC, you can see on the next page, you can see all that. What we've been paying for is a twelve thousand bucks, I believe, compared to five thousand, I think we said.
It was a little over, I think it was a little over.
Again, all the quotes are attached to this, like you know, support.
That's all right. So that's the big upgrade that protects us a little bit more, right?
Yes, if we want to go that route.
It is, but it's twelve thousand dollars a year.
Yes. Now the cyber slot, cyber liability insurance policy, I reached out to Matt Karapa via email the other day. Still waiting back to hear from him. Um, it's yesterday actually. Uh, but we'll go for, we're looking to, you know, what that costs us and what it all entails.
So what, what I've asked.
Ransomware in our system.
What I've asked Josh to do was if there's a six thousand dollar increase from one system to the other that might. That's supposed to protect us, right? It's gonna be a six thousand dollar increase. I mean, what would it cost us to have liability to pay the five thousand dollars a year? And what would the liability cost that would protect us from that if we got it and somebody held us for it, they would cover us, you know? Almost like if you kind of think of it as like a life lock, right? The life lock offers if you get it, we'll insure you up to a million bucks or whatever. I don't know nothing about that. But I thought. If this only costs twenty five hundred dollars a year. It protects us, why would we pay the?
Twelve thousand.
Right, this, the additional six thousand. But I don't know, this may come back, they want seven thousand dollars a year, right? But I at least wanted something to, to, to say, wait a minute, we can, we can, we can attack this in a different way. So. That's what Josh is working on there with this, with this. I'm sure there's.
Limits to how much they would pay.
Well, I wonder if there's, if there's a, a different rate for how much protection you already have.
Sure.
Exactly. But again, uh.
Sure.
It might, the, 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 the more, more expensive policy they have in mind for us and having a three sixty five GCC. And have the cyber security awareness, all that. Again, nothing's a hundred percent. We still, everyone's vulnerable.
Just as though one man has to take care of his phone.
Right now, you can have it.
Okay, so that's what's going on with three sixty five and cyber security. Any questions on that, any of that? Okay. But for the CSX mode agreement, I already kind of briefed, uh, Josh, who was here on that. Basically, we are going back and forth, uh, the mayor and I, uh, with Jeff Everett at CSX. We did a ride along with him, what, last week?
Yep, he came up from Kentucky to meet with us on this very issue.
Yes, yes. And, uh, we're working on an agreement, uh, basically to go out for bid with a contractor. As now is what it looks, something like, I'll call to bid for a contractor for two years. Uh, and then we have certain areas, uh, CSX property, uh, that needs to be, uh, weeded and then sprayed. And certain parts of properties that need to be just mowed regularly. Uh, and we have.
Mowed and mowed.
Yeah, but maintain very much. But it's more to it, obviously. But that's being worked on right now. Uh, we go back and forth, making sure that CSX is, um, in agreement with what we're trying to do.
Yeah, but just real quick, and I know that we want to get out of here, guys. What, what we did in the past was we just had an agreement with the co, with the EMF, with, with CSX that said. They will take care of the, you know, we'll pay you this much for you guys to take care of it, right? And then, and then we bid it out and then. Didn't necessarily have a scope of word, didn't necessarily have it, I'm like, I'm hooked, I was like, oh, we're gonna fix that. Because then they come back and they charge more than what CSX was willing to pay, right? Because we didn't specify. So we are covering all that, right? For everybody's benefit, right? CSX, ours and, and the, the contractor. So that kind of what it was. It was so open ended that there was no direction. We're gonna put direction in this thing. And no, that's right. And we'll make sure that everybody's on the same page before this thing takes off, right? So.
The village.
That's what we're after.
The village paid, basically, to mow CSX property, which is crazy. Mayor and I are on top of that, cause.
I've been mowing it since I was eight.
Does theirs go onto your property a little bit?
Well, that whole section over the hump.
Yeah.
That, I mow that, every time I mow my yard, I mow that.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Home top too.
Well, yeah, we are trying to, uh, we're making it all, it's a project for your own.
Well, I'll tell you what, this is old, this'll be open, if you wanna mow any more of their property, you can bid on it.
I'm pretty good at it. Again, there, there's a chance that we don't have any agreement, maybe, maybe what we ask is not, uh, amenable to, um, CSX and we just say, no, do it yourself, you can do the bidding, or you can do this, and then we'll just, our court enforcement officer can just find out if they don't do it. That's one way off our desk.
And, and, and that's exactly right, what I'm coming to, but keep in mind, CSX is not gonna mow it, right, that's the problem, and I, and, and, and I think that's wrong, but then it goes back to somebody has to do, so we're just trying to, look, we'll, I let Jeff know, we're gonna cover our administrative costs, we're gonna, anything that we have to do, if they were not doing it for free with them, because we wouldn't for anybody else, so, and, and he said, just send over what you guys and then we'll review it. Worst case scenario, they say, no, we're not gonna do it, we say, okay, well, we're not gonna handle this and we will just site like we would anybody else, maybe you have to contact the FBJ or whatever it is that comes. Okay, I'm sorry.
So.
So that's where we're at.
Moving on to CSX lease property, uh, we should have, I'm not playing any of those mailboxes, it's not part of the packet. Uh, I mean, outside of the liability, which the mayor can get into, I do wanna bring up one thing that really concerned me. Uh, on first page, one point two, the licensees, licensee shall use and occupy the premises solely for the purpose of beautification and unpaid public parking and no, and for no other purpose.
Right.
I would like us to maybe, we will actually use the property for like, you know, um,
Festivals or anything like that.
Uh, farmers market, whatever is needed, I mean, it's not a huge property, but we can use that property. Uh, so I would like, I'm going to, very least, push back on that part, and the mayor can take it.
Yeah, so then my concern was, is I looked at the Chamber of Commerce that they had, I think it was, it was like a, it was like a two-page agreement. Somehow this thing come out to be like a six or seven page agreement with a lot of liability, it sounds bad, I was like, you know, I just figured it'd be something simple, like, this should be simple. You know, this isn't, this isn't that hard, but you say, look, here's all we wanna do is have it open to access, we're not gonna do nothing on it, they want us to hold, I think five million dollars of liability on both of them, it's, it's just insane, so I'm like, well, I'm not gonna sign this without council's approval, so. Let us go back to, and I'm sorry that we keep going back and forth, the guys that shouldn't, you know, at first it was, you know, hey, are you guys interested? Well, of course we're interested, you know, especially at the three hundred dollars a year, right, then it come back, they went twelve hundred, I'm like, no, I'm gonna do that, do whatever you want, then they come back here and, and we said no, we said yes, huh, cause we thought it was the Chamber of Commerce agreement, they come back with something different, we said no. They come back with something different from there, right, and then they say, well, we're gonna do this, I said, go ahead and do that, right, it's your property, as long as you're within the code. And now they come back and then they, they were like, okay, we'll, we'll lower the cost for you guys, and they did that, and then, um, that was agreeable, right? And then, so we said, all right, send us over, you know, and it was like a seven-page document, and I read the whole thing, I was, was upset, right? They did that, I'm not gonna agree to this without council knowing what the terms and conditions are that they're signing up for. I think that kinda got, got us into trouble in the past, right, so, um, it's, it's, so we're gonna reach out to them one more time. Worst case, they come and put a fence around it, I don't wanna see that any more than anybody else, but we can't be spending money, so. I mean, they want us to have a five million dollar liability policy on both properties and stuff, I'm saying, wait a minute, guys, come on. And there's a lot of responsibility that comes back on us, just to, guy, it's not that big of a deal, right, that's what I'm saying for them, not talking to you guys. This thing, I don't know, I want the two-page document to move, so I'm frustrated about, we'll reach out one more time, hopefully, you know, we can report back to you guys some good news, but this is, I'm just frustrated with you guys, but I thought we had something good here that everybody can live by and then this come back, so. We'll, we'll be working on it, if that's okay with you guys.
Yep, okay, um, any, any more discussion on the lease agreement, I mean, it's eleven-page document, but, I mean.
Is that what it was, eleven pages?
Eleven pages.
I read it so fast, it always seemed like seven. That's not true. I think I was falling asleep in the morning.
Okay, uh, public records request policy in form, that is attached, uh, I've been looking on that, uh, we've had a meeting, uh, between the police chief, Phil, oh, EMS chief that is, and, uh, the mayor here, we were meeting on that and I've worked on it before and after. Uh, basically, uh, we're trying to make this a centralized process, we're trying to make it, obviously adhere to the current, uh, ORC rules and the ones that are going to affect, in effect, April third. Uh, I will also be doing a three-hour certification course for public records requests next Thursday, the thirteenth. And so I'm the certified public records request person, whatever, uh, it's gonna be fun. And, uh, we are going to get a handle on this whole situation, make it a lot easier, especially our police department, because they've been wasting, I think wasting away hours of their time on a lot of requests that are for, for nothing. I, I would assume, I have to assume.
Yes.
Uh, and I wanna make sure we stop that, uh, cause I, again, I've said before, I'll say it again, I wanna make sure we utilize our police chief to the fullest of his ability, like, he, he needs to be out there in the field more, and I think he would agree with me, and he has agreed with me on that, actually. We're paying him not to do public records requests and he changing his table doing, network redactions and stuff, well, yeah, we want him out there doing his job. So, that's just my two cents, but, again, we, a lot more to do on this, I, he hasn't gone through legal counsel yet, but I don't know if he definitely love, uh, any insight.
Well, they're, they're gonna get to see it to, to, you know, they're the ones who are gonna get to pass it, if, if, to consider it, if they want it, so they're gonna obviously get.
Of course, of course.
Um, but, but, um, keep in mind, I think, we probably would've already had this thing done if it wasn't for me, so I apologize, because my thing is, is always, I mean, we can charge up to this amount. I got a problem with charging up to that amount when people, because people abuse it, right, there's a lot of people in the village that may need it, that don't abuse it. So we're coming up with something, and I think Dave come up with something really good that we're working on, and maybe in a policy that will, that will fix that whole issue, so.
We're gonna make it, we're making, we're making so that the mayor is content.
We're all on the same page, I think, so I, we all know that we serve the citizens.
Before we give you guys a good draft, we're gonna make sure he's good with it, that's what I'm trying to say.
Just don't send it as an email.
Right.
The kitchen went up down.
Any further discussion on that? Any further discussion, we're good? Okay, my word, um, I am, please expect there to be an ordinance first reading next Tuesday, the February eleventh of, we own this parcel that's nineteen ninety and it's not annexed into the village, is where our wastewater treatment pipe currently stands.
Yeah, that's so weird.
Yeah.
Like, I look at my office, I'm like, are you kidding me?
That is wise ways, so.
Never even, I never even considered it, like, we should've been out there.
So, a couple things, one, that makes me mad, I mean, I O C D kinda kicks in, you know, anyways, let's, let's get it over with and just annex it already, the, the ordinance is already with Jeff Dennis, told him we have, we're gonna probably do it first reading on May eleventh, so he's aware of that. He'll give me a better draft, I'm sure, uh, but that is, great, I'm doing this basically for practice, because I'm intending to push east. I'm gonna say this topic that, but. So, practice on what we already have and push east and use what we can legally, uh, to annex additional lands, uh, to grow North Baltimore, uh, whether it be business, farm, house, etc. Uh, so, also, I wanna make sure we are aware that the Inslay corridor is one of our corridors in town and it is not to the standards I think that council, uh, would like it to be at right now, and we can't do anything about that really until we, until it's in North Baltimore. I will say, I did reach out to Chris North, uh, Henry Township, um, zoning inspector, or administrator, probably my third week here, second week here, and he did send them notices, well, he says he sent them some, some notices. Uh, they did have a dumpster at this property, uh, like, last week out, they filled that up. I will also want to say, they do have pigs in the front yard there, uh, so if we do annex, that might be, uh, discussion for later time. It's almost yesterday. So anyways, so, uh, that's just a very brief, um, discussion, uh, or, what I'm trying to say about our annexation strategy, which is currently being worked out between the mayor and Jeff Dennis, and I'll obviously include you guys. There's a lot of weight there and we, I wanna control seventy-five for our police, I wanna control the businesses for income tax, uh, and obviously the weight, this, this will look great on the night. So, anyways, uh, any discussion on that? Okay, going forward, uh, ED specialist job description, I updated again, mayor, I'm sure I talked about this, I've done, uh, this was like yesterday or day, two days ago. Uh, but, uh, I wanted to make sure we added business outreach, uh, uh, any further discussion on that, again, we might not, we probably won't even hire this person until, I'm thinking, March at the earliest. Again, we wanna make sure we are very conscious of our finances, uh, and we don't do anything, uh, like it's right.
So obviously with this position, I mean, we're gonna, so, we met with some, an engineer friend today and they made it quite clear to us with the information they gave us, and I was gonna share with you guys tonight, and I'm not going to, I'll give you a quick overview, and, and it would be like quick, so I think, I need to spend a little bit more time with you guys. Or then, then what?
I'm not gonna be here at nine o'clock tonight, because I wanna share.
But, um, these guys have been in here all day, it's time to get out of here, um, and it's not detrimental, but what I wanna get at is, I, I'm not saying that we suggest that we raise what is, I mean, we got down here twenty dollars an hour, and that's just that, we're gonna have to train somebody, right? And, and the information that I just got shared for three hours was overwhelming on grants, which is wonderful information, I'm really excited about it. Thing is, we're gonna be training somebody on this and we're to try to go to find it, so, to bring somebody in, they're gonna have to be trained, this is gonna be a process, right? So, with, with this, so it's an investment, so we currently got some potential businesses leaving, I know we got Roll, right? I just talked to the guy the other day, which isn't, they're not a big, you know, they pay twenty-five dollars an hour, um, I don't, I don't, I mean, employee. Yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, right behind you, they're closed, and I just talked to the guy yesterday, as a matter of fact, um, and, um, but, but we don't lose any jobs, right, um, we're talking about Tejin, we need to get somebody out in here that can, you know, hopefully be, helping us get strategically, so, and there's a, there's a lot, oh, gosh, you wouldn't, I mean, there's a lot.
There is a lot.
And, and, um, so, the reason why I see that, talking to them today, he, he, there's, Bob was sitting here going over some stuff that I was getting excited about, and he said, well, for twenty bucks an hour, you know, we'll hire you, and, and he chuckled, like, and they're saying, guys, are you serious, trying to get somebody twenty-five, twenty dollars an hour to, to do what works, but, yes, that's what we're talking about, but here's the difference, we're gonna bring somebody on, we're gonna train them to do these things, right? Doesn't mean they don't go somewhere else, because obviously, but, I, I don't know what the answer is at that time, but I think we need to get them in here first, because, you know, I'm, 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 I'm really slow to pull the trigger on or to come to you guys with the recommendations, cause we're not sure about our finances going forward. Obviously, we're not gonna bankrupt, we're good, thank God for that, but, but I also think that we need to have somebody that we can start utilizing, that can, that we can train, with Josh's expertise and, 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 and anybody else we can get. They even said they'd come in and help, you know, I mean, we, I'm sure we'd have to pay a fee, but start sharing this information with that individual so that they know where to go and look, and but there's a whole different discussion for out there, but, just wanna say, you know, I don't, please don't think that we're gonna, and I don't, I'm not saying that any of you do, would be, but we bring this person on and then, you know, all of a sudden, they're out there. I mean, there's gonna be some training that goes on with this and it's gonna be a process, right, that, and we wanna groom this person specifically for North Baltimore and then help us along, that, does that make sense of?
Yes, this person's primary job is going to be business outreach, we wouldn't, in a way, this is a make money, spending money to make when we have the finger, retain business, expand business, uh, bring in business, this person would be primarily responsible for that. Uh, additionally, uh, grant writing, uh, transition grants, especially, we talked about earlier, just, uh, this is gonna be in charge of the ED, uh, business luncheon primarily to be, you know, having that, uh, social media, marketing, it's gonna be a bunch of stuff uh, that they're gonna be in charge of, but I just, I honestly, I can't see, it's too much of it, much of what I'd like to.
If, if, and, uh, if I may interject, please, so, so talking to these guys today, um, keep in mind, like, they get, they filled us with so much great information, but, think about this, we're waiting, so, they came and talked to us and we got a lunch meeting with another group, the guy that does the same thing we're gonna sit down with and, but guys, the only reason why we even, they even knew who it was we wanted to sit down with is cause we went to Team Acorn last week, which was wonderful, like, but, they came and, and, we, we're waiting for it to fall on our lap, that's a problem. That's what I'm getting at, economic development, we need to go out there and we need to set ourselves up and we need to go take it, right? Now, that's, we're a ways off from that, but that's what we need to do, we've got the, we've got the mentality, and I'm not saying it's intentional. I'm talking about North Baltimore as our culture is, well, just wait for it to fall on our lap, it's, it's not gonna fall on our lap. We gotta create it, I know we all know that, we've talked about it for years, right, now, this is gonna help us, I think, go in that direction, there's gonna, you know, it's a, um, but, but that's exactly what happened, what I mean by fall on our lap, Josh and I was at Team Acorn last week, we went back in and, and sat down and was having lunch, and they came up and just.
Front row, by the way, front row.
Front row, yeah, I did that to us, but, but I did, I.
Oh, you probably forgot your glasses.
I thought the front row was down, like, so as we walked out there and seen the special tables up here, I was like, well, we don't wanna sit here, so we went down here and guess what? And I said, I tried to put a robe and a, so while we was out there talking, just mingling, right, a, a group comes up to us and talks to us, and they're an engineering group, right? It's wonderful, talk to us and we're gonna sit down with them, they reached out to us, then these guys did the same thing, if we sat down, they come up and sat down with us, talked to us, and they said, we'd like to talk to you about these, these grants and stuff, and that's what we did today, and it was three hours, so, we went, went, go for it, I, I had actually stopped and said, we got a meeting. Um, so with that being said, but the whole point that I'm getting at, guys, is, it fell on our lap, we don't want economic development to fall on our lap, we don't wanna take the leftovers, we wanna set ourselves up and go out there and create it. And that's, that's what we're talking about, that is what Mr. Cook was asking the question, how much capacity, right? Water has a big impact on, if you can, right, they come in, they say, you got five hundred thousand gallon a day, when we say no, they don't say, hey, we'll help you get there, they go right up to work, I mean, drive down, I just went there today, drive down I seventy-five, get up on ninety-nine and look what's going on. I mean, guys, when they develop, we don't pay for the development, we just make sure everything's in place for them to develop. Like, they're putting water line in and sewer line and, and storm drainage, that's the developers putting that in, right? Because they know that the, that, that the investment, they're gonna get a return on this, that's what we have to try to create, so, um, that, so, that's what this position will help us do. And this may be the perfect timing, that we, we're blessed with getting this person groomed for when that starts really happening here, right? So that we set up, so.
I do want to keep the option open to, if we wanna get someone experienced, it's gonna cost quite a bit more than twenty bucks, uh, but, ties along, I guess, I didn't fault you.
I would like, I would like to try it this way first and see what we can groom, right, that's, that's what I would like, because, because we bring somebody in that's already experienced, I'm not saying that's not a great thing, but they've already got their own way of doing things, I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying it's, they, they, go ahead, go on.
Well, they may have their way of doing things, but they also have, they also have contacts, but it's like with the, the gentleman that Josh had the chance to get that had the credentials, and it's just like the policeman. You know, if we have somebody that drops in our lap, to use the phrase, we'll just have to decide as a group.
Keep in mind, when we mentioned that, twenty dollars a dollar is laughed at, right, so, so think about that, they wouldn't, so, just, but, I mean, um, with that being said, uh, however you guys want to proceed, we can make that happen.
Okay.
What else you got?
That should be everything, I believe.
Anyone have any questions, Josh?
You're the last.
Before I move on to public safety, um, I don't have anything to report, but I would like to ask Aaron, where are we on, um, code enforcement officer?
He's getting, he's getting others, uh.
Interviews tomorrow, interview with, uh, one person tomorrow, we, we, we try to schedule three, uh, but, as far as I know, a lot of two or.
I didn't ask them, I don't know if it's a, the level of.
We'll keep trying, we'll, 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 we'll repost if we have to, uh, we didn't get, we got like, I don't know, maybe twenty applications, but, most of them are not.
So, this one tomorrow doesn't work out, we will repost and, and keep trying.
I wouldn't say we're in a hurry to hire, uh, I mean, we're still, still cold outside, still wet, but, uh.
They got work to do.
They do got work to do, we have. They do got work to do, we have some ramping up to do once the grass starts growing.
Just, just out of curiosity, um, this has to be a police officer?
Nope.
It doesn't, okay, so it was just a police officer, the last guy?
No, he, no, he wasn't, he was just auxiliary.
Auxiliary.
We put him on our auxiliary.
I just, I was a hundred percent sure.
She will equally be part of the interview process, uh, and this person will most likely be located like, like, like Paul was, over, over at the station.
Yeah, they're already set up.
Maybe not as much, though.
No, yeah, 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 more, yeah. There's, yeah, there's more, it's more structured.
All right, any questions for me? Finance and technology.
I don't have anything, but you.
Yeah, I'm just still busy with year end, still have some things to do there, but, but coming around, uh, one of the biggest challenges was ten ninety-nines into the IRS, mainly because needed a PIN number and they're about impossible to get a hold of, but, but got that done. I attended some training last Thursday, Friday in Columbus, uh, that went well, uh, very worthwhile. Really, other than that, you know, just busy, busy.
Matt? Yeah, no, not for Matt, but, um, uh, Matt's doing a great job up to this point, um. Yeah, I'll ask for executive session next week to talk about this, it's not, it's not emergency, it's not anything bad, it's just employee.
Anything else for Matt, or do you have any questions?
Great job so far, Matt, thank you for all your hard work and dedication, commitment, and everything you're getting done. I asked Matt, um, one of the, one of my biggest concerns in the village of North Baltimore pertaining to fighting, it's one of my biggest concerns, and my biggest concern is, obviously, you guys know how much I've pushed for cross-training, and everybody up here in this office is probably hearing, sick of hearing me say it, right, because I say it so much, but I know how important it is to the village of North Baltimore, I've actually, um, shared some, um, one of, one of, one of my biggest ones is payroll, right? Like, we need to make sure there are people who are getting paid, right, to ask Matt within six months to make sure that he can be doing our payroll for us, right? And, and he's already working on it, so I just wanna, cross-training is, from what I understand, happening, um, and I've let him know, it's not gonna be one of the things that I'm told after six months that, yes, we can do it, I'm gonna come in and, just like I told Brian Roberts, I'm gonna come in and I'm gonna question your people if you can do it or not, right, because I've been told, or this body has been told in the past, yes, we are doing it, or yes, it's going on, or yes, no, and I'm not knocking anybody, so please don't take it. And then, now that I'm the mayor, I'm finding out, it never happened, never took place, and we are in a pinch, but we're, we're working our way out of that, thank God, and, and this isn't a, this is just, we're, 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 we're working it out, so, um, and that goes with everybody, I'd like, you know, I've, I've shared with them that I want to see, um, uh, uh, April to be able to do more Matt's work, right? If Matt ever chose to leave us, we, we, we got that, Kylie's doing more of April's and, and vice versa, in every department, right? I've challenged Josh Long with it, I've challenged Brian with it, Brian kinda got upset with me, but we worked that out. It was all right after a conversation, but, um, it's, I think everybody's kinda realizing the importance of it for the protection of the citizens in the village, so. That being said, just want to let, Matt's doing a great job.
And I'd like to thank the mayor for pushing for it, I mean, this is, we've been bothering for a lot of years, so.
You don't have to thank me, but thank you very much for that, I appreciate that. I'm sorry, go ahead, please, uh, that's all I have.
Let's move on to personal policy and ordinance.
I don't have anything, but the mayor has everything.
Um, not at this point, but you will have a couple, come and, we'll hopefully get them to you before they become an emergency. Get to you to at least review, and then if you, um, deem it, um, necessary, guys, remember, if you call individual meetings, right, individual, just, just give us a twenty-four hour notice, or Becky, a twenty-four hours notice that you're just gonna have a committee meeting, obviously, those are open to the public, they have to be. Anybody's welcome to them, but then, like, if there's anything, there's certain things that may not be an emergency that we just kind of, I don't even wanna say emergency, there may be some topics that you guys might wanna discuss more in detail, like the policies that Josh is working on, but we will get them over to you and then you decide if you wanna have a committee meeting or, or if you, I know you work all day and you get off late, if you ever need to schedule a time where you need to meet with us, Dave, Mr. Richmond, please let us know, we'll make it, I mean, shoot, we, we could come up here, you could come to my house, John come to your house, you can, if you ever need any information that you would like shared, that you're not sure what's going on, and Josh will, will make, will make sure that you, that way, if, if you ever wanna call a meeting, because keep in mind, we, we back it down to two meetings a month, right, and then, if, that may need to change in the future, I don't know, I think things are gonna settle down, I'm, I'm hoping, um, I know, I'm working on it, I'll. So just anytime that you wanna kind of meet, just let us know, we'll make, we'll make it happen, we'll try to get these policies off to you for your review, so you can decide if you wanna call a, a committee meeting, right? This outside, that's outside of the committee, we have the outside of the committee, and then you guys are still welcome to have your committee meetings anytime you, you deem that there might be necessary. You just gotta still give the twenty-four hour notice anytime that there's three, uh, council members that are present at the same time.
We are, on, on this topic of the ordinances and all that, the codified ordinances, books we were given, um, do the ladies give, put the updates in our box?
We are working on that right now, so what, go ahead, Josh.
So yes, I reached out to Muni Code, we just missed our December, after December, we shot, so we get them updates every like three months, quarterly updates, uh, we, Becky and I are working on submitting where it's been done last, well, since our first publication, June twenty twenty-three, or July twenty twenty-three, nothing's been done since. So we have to do, we have to give every ordinance since then, uh, to make everything updated, plus, they should be giving us updated actual hard copy books too, I believe, I'll just double check that. But Becky's aware, we're working on it together, it's, it's being, I texted Paula, well, email Paula, I think, fourth rule, I'm familiar about this, uh, but it's, it's happening, we're, we're making sure.
And you'll just put ours in the, uh, in our boxes for the corrections, for the hard copies?
Yes, so are you referring to each individual section after we pass that?
Well, I have the binder, I have the, I have the hard copy binder, and every so often I have to update that, and I was just wondering, do you just put those in our box and we can update it, or?
So, what was, what was just?
Yes.
I hate to spring something up, you already proved it, but, section one, uh, does say that, or was it exactly? Basically, I, I would call for all hard copies to come to the office, and then, under my supervision, Becky here would actually, um, take out the old uh, copy, old outdated version, section one or whatever this case, and put in the new.
Or you're just a day, whoever, we have.
Uh, yeah.
One of the windows.
But, here we go, the village administrator shall request all copies of the manual to be submitted for updates as needed. Under the direction and supervision of the village administrator, the village clerk will remove outdated sections, insert updated sections, and ensure that revised manuals are redistributed to all applicable personnel accordingly.
And we're gonna try to get those eventually on our traffic, and on our website.
Yes, I've also reached out.
Updated and all that, we're supposed to be.
So there's Muni Code, which we already use, and there's Muni Docs, I had a conversation with a guy from Muni Docs, uh, last week, all this is owned by Civic Plus, uh, and we're, I'm getting a quote, and we're gonna look into having our.
I apologize, I'm talking about our, our manual.
Our manual will be, our manual will be posted online, uh, there's aspects of what we have, what was approved, where it says we're gonna, like, we'll have to know where it is, basically, and if they ask for a hard copy, we'll give it to them, kind of thing, for our employees. Uh, but this way, it's all gonna be online, it's gonna be updated on there, it's gonna be updated, hard copy with a centralized process, uh, to me, all of our eyes are getting dotted and all the issues are being crossed.
Okay, uh, any other questions for Dave? Economic and development?
We have a meeting on January seventeen, and, um, here. Uh, I was, our committee, uh, it was Tim and myself, and then Josh Bender, and, um, we had a guest, which was Ashley France, who's the temporary manager of Sheets. She's gonna be taking over one of the new stores in Pineland. Uh, we discussed the economic dinner, speakers, et cetera, and to, to clarify the beginnings here, uh, we, we, we did, talked about a lot of things, but we did have a handicap, which we will not have the next time. And that is that we didn't have the mayor there, no, and he had prior.
I did have a prior, I apologize.
That's all right, um, but we were able to talk some of the things, which were, uh, the, the economic development dinner, we talked about menu and speakers and dates, uh, which I'll come back to. Uh, I did have, I brought a couple of questions from the community, one was, uh, what about a sign board out on seventy-five promoting our town? And what about rules on derelict buildings? So we started discussions on that, by the way, this comes down to you, this copy. Um, discussions, well, we, we clarified that we're talking about two different things for a dinner. And, uh, we're gonna clarify that at our next meeting, but one event is to show appreciation for our village businesses, the other is an event to promote economic developments, uh, development in the community, and those really, um, have to be two separate events.
Yeah, hopefully we can capture both with one.
And we may be able to, but.
It's gonna be expensive to have a economic development dinner, just for the record.
We, we, and again.
There may be something better that we can, well, that's a discussion, pretty special.
Yeah, and so, uh, I'd like to walk away from here in a few minutes with a date for next week. Um, we talked about menu, we talked about two, the American Legion's event room or the meeting room over Hancockwood. Times were discussed, we talked about a luncheon in the middle of the day or an evening dinner. And we talked about two different kinds of events, appreciation of promoting economic growth, perhaps both time slots could be used, or in different times of the year. Comes the menu, you've got options as to what kind of the menu you can use. Again, because the mayor was not there, uh, it'd be best to have, uh, him there, and, uh, he, he, I, I know that he and the mayor have had further discussions on this topic. Our special guest, Ashley France, expressed interest in participation, perhaps donating cookies, coffee, that kind of thing, soft drinks, but she was very positive about it from and for representing Sheets. So, that was our meeting.
Any questions for Bill? All right, moving on, mayor, do you have anything else?
Just real quick, just, uh, I'm not gonna go over the grants that are out there, there's a ton of them, yeah, I will, I just wanna ask, look, um, you guys work as a unit, and I know you guys know that, you guys don't work as an individual, you guys are a unit body that agrees, you guys work together. Please remember that when we're using, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, when we're using our legal counsel, please remember that, right? We can't, when we reach out to Jeff Dennis, he, he charges us, and they're very, very hefty, so if this body agrees that, hey, we need to utilize our legal counsel, you guys have that right, according to the revised code. It's the only area in the revised code that it spells out that the legislative authority can work in an administrative capacity. I've read it, I'm the one that shared it with councils, as a matter of fact, I had written our last legal coun, or two legal councils that go on it, and, and, and you guys do have that right, but guys, please work together and, and, and whatever you guys think you need to come up with to utilize our legal counsel, please do, right? Just please, I haven't agreed it with the rest of you, because maybe Aaron wants to reach out to him, but maybe Mike, Tim, and Paula seem to think we need to discuss it before Aaron reaches out to him, and maybe through that discussion, we don't necessarily need legal counsel, right? So let's, you guys make that determination, or please make that determination as a group, right? That's what I'm asking from you guys, that's all that I, yeah, I just wanted, please bring that up.
Okay, something else that anyone wants to share?
Oh, shoot, I did forget something, that's all right. Yes?
Uh, for the agenda, I've got the.
Will be part of what I said.
Yes, fifty cents recommendation for. It will need to be on there. And the purchases that Brian needed for our equipment.
You want anything on?
Oh, it's already, it's only, it's already budgeted, but we still, we need, we still need to approve it. From the trucks? Yeah, but there was other equipment, he said, you have some other improvements? He's the sprayer, whatever the sprayer, I remember I asked. The one who's gonna be rebuilding those brand new, whatever he requests needs to go through council, they have the authority to approve it, like, without you guys, I don't like, I hope that's okay with you. I want a lot of stuff to come on, you guys, you guys. Um, Palmer Energy, please put that on there for me to discuss, Palmer Energy, prepare it. Got to share this with you guys tonight, but it's okay. Right, no, 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 that's never mentioned, so you guys, I'll be heard, we talked to you now. That's exactly what she said, it would be with county. I'm talking about that a little bit more, because right along.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I reached out to East Steiner last year, came on, I see, we got three, yeah, we got three houses, we need to go, I'm gonna go buy some, get one. The county. Adrian Richmond. Yeah, so I don't know, I reached out to them, that you were supposed to be administering. Hey, Dave?
Yes, sir.
I got those, those, uh, I got those, those.
You did?
Yeah, careful. They're in my truck, holding the light out of my truck, and I brought her car, so I'll just. You're doing it. Why are you giving me that?
I kept staring at you during the meeting, like, this guy just shows up. He emailed me?
Yeah, I'm like, could you hear? And then you sent me. Where's it on the website? It shows you what I mean. Here.
And I'm like, uh, I don't know.
And I said, no, no, it's. It's more of a motion. We'll reach out to them tomorrow, oh, you're going up there.
I was not aware of it until we made way through the whole BZA thing, right?
You got it, I got it in my truck, I picked.
Yeah, I'll put it on the website.
I will, hey, so I don't forget, you, you know, I'll be glad, it takes, it takes two seconds, two seconds. And Dave?
It's okay, but then, I can't find it.
I'll put it in your mailbox, just, you don't, you don't understand what I'm saying, keep them there when you come up here. Hey, I will put those, uh, petitions in your mailbox, so I don't have this again, but if, if, if you want, don't hang them out, then when you come up next Tuesday, I hope you throw it out. Cause I don't wanna run into this again, where I got them in my truck for this reason, and then, my wife's got my truck, and she had to go get some two.
And I thought all day was Wednesday.
Well, you know what I did, last time, I have my signatures still out, I can go in the top.
For tomorrow, thinking it was Thursday.
I got it, so they'll be in your mailbox, and then you guys just leave them in there till next Tuesday, come up here, we'll get them filled out, and you guys start circulating them. All right, perfect. So I'm upset about it, I agree with you.
All right, well, we will see you later.
That's a lot of money to overlook, I get that, and I know I'm still sending mixed signals, but here's, it's not their fault, is what I've got a problem with.
Are you saying this real quick, so you can pack this?
That's my whole thing is, is this isn't a, this isn't one of those, that's why I said at the beginning, I'm seeing, I'm seeing.
The way you stated it was one well.
Well, if it was, well, I don't know, cause here, here's what I'm saying, is, um, there's plenty of people that bring on these things on their own, and they come up next Tuesday to get them out, I don't see that. Listen, you guys, I don't necessarily support that. I, I agree, twelve thousand dollars, that's what I was saying, hey, I'm gonna ask you guys for ten thousand dollars a year for this very reason, so could we, and I love what you're asking, could we put ten thousand dollars towards that, and then we, cover the other two, I don't know if that's the right thing to do or not, I don't know, so I love what you was asking, right? But I think what we need to do is, what we're, what we're starting to, get some more information about what they did up there, that is, that really upsets me.
But Paul was right. Up there, they just threw it back around.
Yeah, yeah, cause they're hoping we're like, okay, you just call them right out, they don't get called out.
Wow, wow. Well, Matt's gonna start that process tomorrow, yeah, and then, we don't know where it's gonna end, but I know you guys will have more information on it, hopefully by next Tuesday.
Right.
And, and we can make a, a, a determination, but how you guys want to see, but no, whatever you guys decide is what happens, doesn't matter what I think, doesn't matter what he thinks, with, you know, it doesn't matter what they think, whatever you guys think, just always want to do what's right for the citizens of North Baltimore, just think about this, like, I, I get this, I talked to him about Saturday, and he said, Aaron, you should have got an attorney, and I'm saying, okay, I get that, I get that, but I'm not sure that, I, I don't know the whole process, right?
Well, you're not gonna get the county to admit it with their fault.
Yes.
I haven't looked at it yet, but they say that.
Yeah, so here's what they were, to be honest with you, David, I really appreciate what you're saying, and, and, and I, and I, so if this would have been something that was just a simple oversight, I would say, there's one thing you knew, like, right, that's not the case, when they purchased the property, the, the state, or the county said, this is all you own, and they, they, nothing, even like Dee said, you should have never even got the title, right? So they, they did all that with us, so how are cynicals supposed to know? Even like they said, if, 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 if we didn't know that that was assessed under that, and they would have told us, we'd have just never even been on the property, right? We would have never, we don't, that property ain't worth that, right? So, how do we proceed going forward, cause we kind of, as you said, right, this one, obviously, the trade force, the county, like, right, like, hey, you guys need to take some ownership in this, because we did everything right on our end, and you didn't let them know it, now they're stuck with it, and I think the cynicals should go back and say, you guys just take this property back, I hope they don't do that, but that's what I would do, I would say, county, this is yours, I don't want you to do it, I'm not doing this. And then the third one, you let them, how do we make sure that this don't happen again to, you know, the whole, ten, cause we don't want to spend ten thousand dollars to demo in a house that we, you know, kind of like what we're doing for the second auction, they turn around and, and have to assess, you know, three thousand dollars under the taxes because, be, be, because maybe it's thirteen thousand dollars to demo the property, so we have to assess the rest back, and then have to forgive that too going forward, right? So I think this is kind of one of those things, I, I, somebody said it here, is, we need to make sure that, I think, Mr., that, somebody said, we need to make sure that we're following up with the county. And I would have never thought about that too here, because you would think that, cause it, we got, it's on record that Tony said that in September, that assessment, so they had it, they just never, I don't know what happened. Um, so.
Some sort of receipt.
Yeah, I can't, I can't hardly blame the cynicals, and I don't.
Right, and I, yeah, I didn't either.
And I just went to, uh,
It's twelve, right?
Twelve thousand, that's right, you can't over twelve thousand, I agree with you, so I don't know how to handle it, because. Yes.
And they get back the land, we're stuck with the land.
Still on there.
And then, what, the other six thousand dollars on top of that, so that twelve thousand dollar hit, just went to an eighteen thousand dollar hit.
So that's kind of what I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dave.
But, yeah.
That's kind of what I was saying, was, almost, cause this is like that, like there's, like Dee said, and I appreciate what she said, cause I, I, I agree with her, we're set this, a, 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 a past practice, well, we're not necessarily, we, we are, because this is an, it's, it's a past practice, it's something that you do, and then you follow that practice, right? This isn't the case here, there's circumstances here that make this a unique situation that we're, you know, I mean, that, that everybody's faced with, this shouldn't have ever happened in the first place. Now, what this does do is, I think, Dave, is it makes us aware, so that we don't let it happen again.
Well, yeah.
And that's kind of what I'm saying is.